The Piscataway Township Planning Board Meeting will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice published in the Courier-News. Notice posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building. Notice made available to the township clerk. Notice sent to the Courier-News and the Star-Ledger. Mister Barlow, would you please read the open public meeting notice?
Certainly, Madam Chair. This meeting is being done in conformity with the Department of Community Affairs Guidelines on virtual meetings and it's appropriate to go forward in this fashion.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Waller?
President.
Councilwoman Cahill?
She's here. She must have.
Gabby, you're muted. She's here. Ms. Corcoran?
Here.
Reverend Kenny?
Here.
Mister Atkins?
Here.
Mister Foster's not here. Mister Ahmed? Not yet. And Madam Chair?
Here. Could everybody's who see the flag over my right shoulder, please let us pledge allegiance to the flag in unison, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have professionals to be sworn in.
Chris, Docney, if I could just swear you in. You swear the testimony you give before this board this evening will be the whole truth. So have you got?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Mister Barlow. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair. Items number ten, eleven, and twelve are postponed until the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Number ten is a discussion.
The twelfth. I think Wednesday is on the twelfth. If we'll check our calendars.
Yes, it's the twelfth. My apologies.
All right. Is Wednesday, June twelfth. Uh, so item ten, which is deals with block three, seven, zero, two, lot two. Whether or not it meets the criteria for an area in need of redevelopment is being moved to the June twelfth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Item eleven, which is the addendum to the redevelopment plan for block one, seven, oh, one, lot two point zero, three, forty-one hundred New Brunswick Avenue, is being postponed until the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting. And item twelve, which is a discussion to authorize foresight to amend the redevelopment plan for block nine, two, zero, one, lots forty-six point two, zero, is also being postponed until the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Any of those matters that have been noticed, there will be no further notice. The matters will be heard at that time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, item number thirteen, uh, DS fifteen, twenty-five, Washington LLC, preliminary and final site plan meeting. I mean, site plan.
Madam Chair, I think we have to pay the bills and adopt the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant to do that, too. Can we get and announce a motion to play the duly duly audited bills?
Madam Chair, Reverend Kenny, make a motion that we pay the bills.
Do I have a second?
Dylan Corcoran, I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mister Ahmed? Nope. And Madam Chair?
Yes. Item number eight, adoption of resolution to memorialize action taken on April the tenth, twenty twenty-four. There's none tonight. Okay? Now, item number nine, adoption of the minutes from the regular meeting of April tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Madam Chair, I'd like to motion that we adopt the minutes for April tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Dylan Corcoran, I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mister Atkins?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. And now we get to, um, item number thirteen, which is twenty-three PB, eleven, slash, twelve, V as in Victor, DS fifteen, twenty-five, Washington LLC for preliminary and final site plan.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Sorry, it's David Prasad from Bob Smith's office.
Okay, thank you.
So, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Name is David Prasad, licensed attorney in the state of New Jersey, here tonight representing DS fifteen, twenty-five, Washington LLC, uh, seeking preliminary and final site plan with bulk variances. Uh, the property is located at fifteen, twenty-five South Washington Avenue, block fifty-three, oh, one, lot fifteen, oh, one, in the LI five zone. Um, the property is uh, one hundred and forty-three thousand eighty square feet. It's a regularly shaped lot and it has frontage along South Washington Avenue in the amount of one hundred and seventy-nine point eighty feet. Currently, there is a twenty-eight thousand four hundred and five square foot warehouse and the rear yard is an unstriped dirt and gravel area that's in the rear. Uh, the applicant tonight is seeking preliminary and final site plan approval with bulk variances to install uh, parking or asphalt in the rear yard and striping for trailer storage spaces. And they're also proposing twenty-four parking sp- passenger vehicle parking spaces throughout the site. Uh, the applicant's also seeking a retaining wall with a fence above it on the south side of the property and proposing an elevated loading pier on the south side of the building. There are a few variances that we are seeking, bulk variances that we are seeking tonight. A few of them are existing. The existing variances are for minimum lot area where two hundred and fifteen thousand square feet is required in the zone and a hundred and forty-three thousand and eighty square feet is existing. Uh, we're also seeking minimum lot width where three hundred feet is required and seventy, one hundred and seventy-nine point eight feet is existing and minimum lot frontage where three hundred feet is required, one hundred and seventy-nine point eight feet is also existing. There is an existing, uh, side yard setback variance on the north side of the property where fifty feet is required and thirty-five point five feet is existing. And we are proposing a change to the side yard setback on the south side of the property where fifty feet is required and twenty point three feet is proposed due to the loading area that we're, uh, proposing on the south side of the building. The new variances that we are seeking is, um, for a wall, a retaining wall and fence that's located behind the front yard setback and it exceeds eight feet in height. The total height is nine feet because it is a five-foot retaining wall with a four-foot fence above on top of it. Uh, we are seeing a variance for parking in the front yard where it is required to be twenty-five feet away from the parking line and we are proposing twenty-four point five feet from the property line. And we're also seeking a variance for a freestanding sign where it's supposed to be fifty feet from the property line. We're proposing twenty-five point four feet from the property line. Uh, there's also an existing sign there that is the new sign and will replace the existing sign. Uh, we have three witnesses tonight. We have the applicant Levi Drew, who's, uh, here to represent the, uh, DS fifteen, twenty-five, Washington LLC. We have our professional engineer, Mister Thomas Muller from Dynamic Engineering, and we have a traffic engineer, uh, Craig Paragoy from Dynamic Traffic. We also will be addressing four staff reports that we were, uh, received from the town. We have the DNR engineering report dated February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. We have the planning report from CME dated February twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. We have the Township of Piscataway, uh, report from Mister Hinterstein dated February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. And finally, the traffic report from Dolan and Dean dated February fifth, twenty twenty-four. If the board has no questions for me, I would like to introduce our first witness and have him sworn in.
Oh, your first witness?
Miss, um, Madam Chair, just before we do that, I've been told that Ms. Dolan, the the board's traffic expert is on the call. Just trying to, oh, there she is.
Here I am. I'm here.
I'm just gonna, uh, Ms. Dolan, just gonna swear you in to comment on any of the applications going forward. I don't have to keep doing it, okay?
Sure.
You swear the testimony you give before the board tonight will be the whole truth. So have you got?
Yes, I do.
Perfect. Um, and I'm sorry, your first witness, sir?
Uh, for the first witness, I'd like to call, uh, Mister Levi Drew, who's here to represent the, uh, applicant.
Okay. Just kind of trying to find him.
Yes, am I coming through?
You are, uh, orally, not visually. Oh, there you are. Sir, if you could state your name, spell your last name for the record and give us your professional address.
Sure. Levi Drew. It's L-E-V-I, last name Drew, D-R-E-W. Uh, my address, what do you want the business, business address?
That's fine.
Sure. It's fourteen, twenty-one, thirty-eight Street, Brooklyn, New York. It's one, one, two, one, eight.
You may proceed, Mister.
I'm sorry, your zip again, sir? The zip, sir?
One, one, two, one, eight.
Okay. Can you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you give before the board will be the whole truth?
Yes.
Your witness, sir?
Thank you. Uh, Mister Drew, uh, if you can please tell the board your position at the company and your role with this project?
Yes, I'm a partner in this property and, and the fifteen, twenty-five, Washington, um, LLC. Uh, we invested in this, uh, in this building and the property and we're trying to upgrade it according to, you know, the the zones and make it safe and, and, uh, and according to the, uh, and we bought it. It was the original owner that put up the building. He was the, you know, the first owner of this and had it for forty years. We took it over and we, you know, it was never upgraded to the, to the newest, uh, you know, rules and regulations. So we're trying to bring it up to, up to date. And, you know, because we're gonna be putting in all the money and everything we need to do to bring it to that, we wanna make sure that it's gonna be rentable and, uh, feasible for any, any tenant that could use it for a good use. So we're trying to, you know, make it, make it, uh, you know, in the best we can, we can rent it and, and the best, you know, best possible scenario, it should be, you know, safe and, and usable for for, for that area and for that, for that usage for, for this property and this building.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so for the proposal tonight, uh, you are providing or you are proposing thirty-nine trailer storage spaces, is that correct?
Yeah, for the back of the building.
And also eleven off-street vehicle passenger, uh, passenger vehicle spaces, is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, you're also going to be providing ten passenger vehicle parking spaces in the front of the property, is that correct?
Correct.
And there's additional striping happening for three, uh, parking spaces on the south side of the building, is that correct?
Right.
So a total of twenty-four passenger vehicle spaces will be provided as part of this, uh, proposal, is that correct? And also there's a retaining wall and a fence above that retaining wall on the south side of the property, is that correct?
Yes.
And you're also providing a loading pier on the south side of the building, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the proposed use for this property is going to continue as a warehouse, is that still true?
Yes, yes, it's the warehouse.
Uh, can you describe for me the current, sorry, excuse me, the, uh, current use of the, the site right now?
Yeah, now it's vacant. It's all cleaned out. There's nothing there now.
Okay. And as you mentioned, you're seeking these improvements, uh, to optimize the space for a potential tenant to come in and rent the building, is that true? Okay? And you don't have at this very moment a particular tenant in mind, is that correct?
No, no, nothing. It, with, we may use it, you know, we're, we're expanding our businesses, but it's, if we don't use it, then we would look to, to extend, you know, to get a tenant. We also have a business in Brooklyn. We're thinking of moving it over to Piscataway, but if that doesn't work, we'd look for a tenant.
Understood. Thank you.
High-class business, but, uh, if that doesn't work out, we will look for a tenant.
Okay. Thank you. I have no more questions for this witness. If the board has any questions?
Members of the board, do you have any questions of this witness, Mister Levi? Hearing no questions, uh, can we, uh, open it up to the public? Ms. Buckley? Anyone in the public, uh, wishing to ask any questions of this witness, would you signify by flashing your hand signal?
No, Madam Chair.
Ms. Buckley, I would note that Mister Ahmad is now on.
Um, we note that Mister Ahmad has joined the meeting.
Hi, Basher.
Uh, close to the public, you can call your next witness, Mister Prisod.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, my next witness will be our professional engineer, Mister Thomas Muller from Dynamic Engineering. I'd ask that the board swear him in, please.
Okay. Uh, Mister Muller, if you could state your name, spell your last name and give us your professional address, sir?
Uh, it's Thomas Muller, Dynamic Engineering Consultants, nineteen oh four Main Street, Lake Como, New Jersey, zero, seven, seven, one, nine.
M-U-L-L-E-R?
Yes.
Raise your right hand. You swear the testimony you give before this board will be the whole truth?
Yes, I do.
Your witness, sir?
Mister Muller, if you can provide your qualifications to the board, please?
Absolutely. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey and good standing. I'm also a licensed professional planner in good standing in the state of New Jersey. I have my bachelor's of science and master's of science, uh, in civil engineering from Rutgers University. Uh, I have over thirteen years of experience in the civil engineering field. Uh, currently employed as a senior principal with Dynamic Engineering Consultants. I've been with the firm for over eleven years. I've designed many similar projects to this. Uh, personally visited the site and were, uh, I was personally, uh, involved and directly overseeing the, the design of this project. Um, I presented in front of many planning zoning boards throughout the New Jer- throughout New Jersey.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mister Muller, if you can please go through the site plan, description of the property and the proposed improvements, and then we could address the staff reports received by the township professionals.
Absolutely. I have, uh, two very simple exhibits. Um, I'll just share my screen. Okay, can you, uh, see the aerial map exhibit here?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So this is just an aerial map.
Mister Mueller, we're just gonna mark any exhibits that you put up as A one, the next one A two, et cetera, and oh, so this is A one, and if you could just briefly describe what it is. Thank you.
Yep. Uh, exhibit A one is an aerial map exhibit prepared by my office dated May eighth, twenty twenty-four. It's simply a colorized aerial image showing the existing additions on the site and the surrounding properties within generally two hundred feet of the site. Just gonna quickly use this exhibit to describe the existing site and surrounding areas. Uh, David did a great job of explaining the existing sites. I'm not gonna spend too much time on this, but uh, it's existing block fifty-three, oh, one, lot fifteen point zero, one. It's identified as fifteen, twenty-five, South Washington Avenue, which is also identified as County Route six sixty-five. We're in the Township of Piscataway. Uh, we have about a hundred and eighty linear feet of frontage on South Washington Avenue. That is our only public right-of-way frontage. Uh, South Washington is three-lane roadway northbound, two-lane roadway southbound with a centralized, uh, dual left-turn lane. Uh, South Washington also chokes down to two, two lanes in each direction immediately south of our site. Site's generally rectangular. Uh, it is a very narrow lot. It's about three point three acres in size. Uh, as was previously mentioned, the site's been historically developed as a warehouse, uh, since the early nineteen eighties. Uh, over time, it's become very dilapidated and the proposal here is to clean up the site and formally convert this building to a warehouse with trailer storage in the back. Uh, we are in the LI five light industrial zone, which does permit warehousing and trailer storage. The existing site has one very narrow full movement driveway to South Washington Avenue. Uh, surrounding uses to the north, we have the LI five zone as well as the uh, GB general business zone. There's a number of commercial uses and industrial uses to the north. Uh, we have a welder rental shop. We have, uh, the Popeyes and Seven-Eleven development to the north of that. And then immediately to the north of that is Stellton Avenue. To the east, we also have the LI five zone. We have a number of, um, self-storage users and industrial users to the east. To the south, again, LI five zone, commercial industrial uses. Then to the west, we have South Washington Avenue, uh, self-storage and then some large warehouses, uh, to the west. Um, like I mentioned, existing site is, is dilapidated. It's not, it's not well-defined in terms of development. Um, there's an existing building there, uh, which we are converting that I'll touch on in a minute. Uh, there is a small parking area along the front, along the western portion of the building, all of which is being reconstructed. Then, uh, jumping right into the proposed site here, this will be exhibit, uh, A two. Uh, exhibit A two is a site plan rendering prepared by my office dated May eighth, twenty twenty-four. This is a colorized version of the site plan design, uh, identical to what the board has received. Simply just shows the, the landscaping around the site, different hatches for the different covers of land that we have. The grays are asphalt, the, uh, the tan colors, the, the existing building, and it shows the striping and, and everything throughout the site. Um, so we are here seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval. Uh, as David mentioned, we did receive a series of professional review letters, uh, all of which we are in full agreement with. There are a few items that we requested to clarify, which I'll touch on quickly throughout my testimony. Uh, but we did review those, those review letters in great detail and we have no issue addressing those comments. Um, we also had the benefit of attending a technical review committee meeting where we went through the review letters and, uh, I believe we're on the same page as the board professionals. So just a high-level summary of the development. Again, this is a simple warehouse conversion. The existing building will remain. The only addition to that building is a small three hundred square foot uh, loading dock pier at the southern portion of the building, which will serve tractor trailers, which I'll touch on in a minute. The existing building is broken up into a, a front office portion, which is on the west side of the building. And then, uh, the rest of the rectangular portion of the back is, uh, warehousing. So the front portion of the office is about five thousand six hundred and forty square feet. And the rear warehouse component is approximately twenty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-five square feet. Uh, we're proposing a total of twenty-four parking spaces, which includes ADA compliant parking spaces as well as electric vehicles pa- parking spaces. Uh, we're proposing two little, two total loading spaces, one of which is here at the, the loading dock pier. And the second of which is in the rear of the building with an existing, uh, loading dock door along the back of the building. Then we're also proposing thirty-nine total trailer storage stalls in the rear of the site, as you can see on the, uh, east side, the right side of the exhibit. Uh, just to give you a general idea of, of our site plan design thought process, um, like I mentioned, the existing site has a very narrow driveway that serves the site. It's technically a full movement driveway under existing conditions, but we recognize the fact that uh, Wet Washington Avenue is essentially a six-lane roadway in this area. And through coordination with the design team, with the township professionals, uh, and as well as the county professionals, we've designed this project to eliminate any lefts out or lefts into the site. Uh, so this is a simple right-in, right-out project where vehicles will be required to travel from the south into the site and then they'll be required to exit the site and go north back onto Washington Avenue. Uh, so we have a very narrow site, as I mentioned, so we are proposing a, an ingress-in driveway at the northern portion of the bu- site and egress-only driveway on the southern portion of the site. Um, so as vehicles enter the site, they could either exit or they could maneuver to the rear of the site or they could maneuver to the front of the site. In the front, we have passenger vehicle parking, uh, so tractor trailers will be prohibited from this front area along the western portion of the building. Uh, but then our tractor-trailer deliveries will be routed to the back of the site where they could utilize the trailer storage area or they could utilize the loading areas for the, uh, existing building. Then as vehicles leave, obviously, they just exit out the driveway back onto South Washington Avenue. In terms of zoning, um, we did review the CME review letter in, in great detail. We, we agree with the outlined variances and design waivers, uh, that they clearly outlined in their letter. Uh, I'm just gonna touch quickly on, on, on a few of these items, but there are a number of bulk standards that this project complies with. Um, minimum lot depth, uh, three hundred feet, feet is required. We have seven hundred and twenty-six feet of depth, so we are compliant. Ordinance also requires an eighty-foot front yard setback. This, this building is currently eighty-one point two feet from the front yard, so it is compliant. Then the rear yard setback is required to be fifty feet and we are well over fifty feet to the rear, uh, of the site. The building height, uh, maximum is fifty feet. We're, the existing building is well under fifty feet in height. Maximum building coverage is fifty percent and we're only at approximately nineteen point eight percent, so we're more than less than half of what's allowed. And then, um, minimum floor area required is twenty thousand square feet, but we're at twenty-eight thousand square feet, uh, so we meet that requirement. A few existing non-conformities, as David mentioned, uh, lot area, two hundred and fifteen thousand square feet is required. We're proposing, under existing conditions, uh, one hundred and forty-three thousand eighty square feet. So that's an existing condition that will remain. Minimum lot width is three hundred foot required. We have one hundred and seventy-two feet existing. That's not being exacerbated as part of this project. Lot frontage, three hundred feet is required. We have one hundred and seventy-nine point nine feet. And then the minimum side yard setbacks to the northern portion of the building. Ordinance requires a fifty-foot setback. The existing building is thirty-five point five feet from that side property line, so that, that is an existing non-conformity. And then to the southern portion of the building, again, ordinance requires a fifty-foot setback. Existing building is thirty-five point two feet, uh, but when we add this elevated loading dock, we're at twenty point three feet. Apologize. Um, for parking, as I mentioned, we're proposing a total of twenty-four parking spaces. The board traffic engineer did confirm that they agree with our calculation, but I believe the, the board landscape architect, um, and CME, uh, requested some additional information on that. Uh, our original thought process was to use the warehouse parking calculation, which is one parking space per two thousand square feet for warehouse uses. Uh, but it was requested that we break out the office for this component, so once we break out the twenty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-five square feet of warehouse and the five thousand six hundred and forty square feet of office, the parking requirement per the ordinance would be, uh, forty total parking spaces required. And like I mentioned, we have twenty-four total parking spaces. Uh, for a use like this, we look at industry standard. We look at ITE, we look at, uh, the Institute of Transportation Engineer Standards. What we see is that, uh, point three seven parking spaces are required for each one thousand square feet of warehouse uses, which includes the what, the office component. Uh, so using that ratio, per ITE standards, we would only require eleven parking stalls. And like I mentioned, we're proposing twenty-four parking stalls, which is, in our opinion, is a, a suitable number of parking stalls for use of this nature. So in the event the board does decide we do need a variance, it's our opinion that this project is more than sufficient in terms of parking and that this, the site will certainly operate efficiently with the twenty-four parking spaces that are proposed. All the parking spaces are nine by eighteen in size. There was a mention in the planner's letter that obviously our ADA stall is eight feet wide. Uh, that does require a design waiver technically, uh, because it's not nine feet wide, but once you include the, the hatched area for that ADA stall, the parking stall itself is actually sixteen feet wide, which is more than what the ordinance requires. Uh, we also have a number of, uh, drive aisles throughout the built, throughout the site. Um, there were comments from the board professionals to consider making the southern drive aisle one-way, uh, considering the, the narrow nature of that drive aisle. The applicant, um, and my office have no problem complying with that, so this driveway to the south of the building will become a one-way driveway, uh, that will not, that will not negatively impact the, the site operations. Uh, site's being designed for ADA compliance. We are proposing a sidewalk along the frontage. There are existing sidewalks throughout the site in front of the building to allow the parking areas to access the building. There is a design waiver required because there is no sidewalk provided for the eleven stalls along the north and then the three stalls along the south of the building, but again, it's a very small site. Um, those parking stalls are easily accessible into the building and throughout the site. So in our opinion, the additional impervious coverage and and components associated with requiring a sidewalk are, are not necessary, so we think the design waiver is suitable and, uh, reasonable. Board professionals also did ask us to provide additional striping and signage throughout the site, which we have no problem with. It was also requested that the refuse enclosure in the rear of the site be solid fencing, which we, we also have no problem doing. The loading complies with the ordinance in terms of the number of stalls. We are required to provide two, and we are providing two. There was a request for clarification on the clearance for these loading docks, fourteen feet required in the ordinance, which these are open air loading areas, so we do provide more than fourteen foot clearance. And then the size of these loading areas, twelve by fifty is required by the ordinance. The proposed loading dock here provides much more than twelve by fifty in size. And then the loading dock in the rear shares the drive aisle in the rear of the site. So there's more than twelve by fifty feet easily available for tractor trailers to temporarily store in this area. But because there is basically an overlap between the drive aisle and that loading area, technically, a design waiver is required. As I mentioned, the driveways are being reconstructed for right in, right out. This is being reviewed by the county. We have gone back and forth with them on their technical comments. We are expecting their approval very shortly. They are, they are accepting our driveway design at this point. We're just finalizing some few minor details. There is a request for us to clarify the angle of these driveways. The ordinance requires a maximum of a sixty degree angle. The northern driveway is at seventy five degrees, and the southern driveway is at one hundred and ten degrees. So we are complying with the ordinance there. We do need a design waiver for the setback for these driveways, ten feet required, but we have less than ten feet. This is just simply a function of the narrowness of the site and the driveway design that's required for the site. The driveways have been designed to accommodate WB sixty seven tractor trailers without conflict, and I believe your board traffic engineers in agreement with the truck circulation that was presented. Quickly, just touching on grading and stone mortar, this project is a major development defined by the state and local codes. We are completely compliant with the state and local codes with current regulations that were established as recently as July of last year. So we are providing green MTDs, green infrastructure throughout the site, which includes previous pavement, green filtration devices, and then underground storage compartments. As David mentioned, in terms of the grading on the site, we do have a small section of retaining walls along the southern portion of the building. That's just simply to accommodate the gray change between our site and the adjacent property. We do need to provide a four foot high fence on top of that wall just for safety, for fall protection. So that does, that those components equal about nine feet in height. The ordinance allows a maximum of eight feet. So there is a variance required for that wall and fence combination. We did review the board engineer's review letter. There was a number of stone mortar comments, which we have no problem addressing directly with the board engineer. We're not proposing any improvements to the or modifications to the existing utilities for the building. There are fully all full utility connections to the existing right of way, so we're not proposing any modifications to that. In terms of landscaping, just quickly, we're providing a substantial evergreen buffer around the rear of the site to buffer the existing site from the neighbors. Right now, there is essentially no landscaping whatsoever in the rear. It's just gravel and dirt. So we're providing that substantial landscape buffer around the side and rear of the site. And we're also providing a number of landscape features along the front of the site to help improve the aesthetics of the site. We're providing shade trees and evergreen shrubs along the front of the building. There are a number of comments from the landscape architect, which we have no problem addressing. We'll provide additional landscaping in the front, and we'll provide landscaping around the proposed monument sign along the front of the building. In terms of lighting, we're providing all new LED light fixtures in the rear of the site. They'll all be shielded, rear shields to help prevent lighting spillage to the maximum extent practical to off-site properties. The lights are all downward facing, they're at a fixed position, they're not floodlights, they cannot be adjusted. So they will be focused downward, and the light, the light is not visible, it's a full cutoff light. In the rear of the site, we are providing the minimum light required for safe and efficient maneuvers and operations in the back of the site. The board professionals requested some additional lighting and analysis in front of the site. So we are more than happy to provide that to them, hopefully as a condition of approval, should we get approval tonight. Signage is completely compliant with the ordinance. It was requested that we reduce the freestanding sign height from fifteen feet in height to a ten foot monument sign height. Considering the use of this property and the neighboring signage packages, we agree with that recommendation, so we have no problem doing that. The only variance associated with the signage is simply the setback to the right of way. I believe a fifty foot setbacks required, we have twenty five point four feet. That's simply because we're removing the existing sign and replacing it with a new sign. And as you could see, based on the nature of this design, it just would not be possible to provide a sign with a compliant setback. And lastly, just outside agencies, as I mentioned, we're in the process of pursuing county planning board approvals. We're also working with the township planning department to obtain any necessary soil erosion permits. And then we will be required to get a five G three permit from the NJDEP once we do get soil erosion approval from the township. That's really it from, you know, high level of everything. I'd be happy to dive into the review letters more or go through anything else in more detail if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Madam Chair, I don't have any questions for Mr. Mueller, if the board has any questions for him.
Members of the board, you've heard the testimony of this witness. Do you have any questions of him at this time?
Madam Chair, I actually have one question pertaining to the sidewalks. Is the applicant going to put striping as if the sidewalks going across the ingress egress on South Washington Avenue?
Yes, there will be striped crosswalks not on this exhibit, but we have agreed to do that, yep.
And then also have towards the other, the southerly portion of the property line right there to site, because the folks are actually walking on the grass right now. So at some point, your next door neighbor is going to have to have installed sidewalks, so it'll connect out.
Understood, thank you.
That's all, Madam Chair.
Any other board members have questions of this witness?
Madam Chair, Reverend Kenny, in regards to the trailer parking spaces, are those going to be loaded trailers, empty trailers, or it depends on who's going to rent the warehouse?
Exactly correct, it depends on who rents the warehouse. They could be empty, they could be loaded, but it's open to the tenant's discretion.
Okay, and what type of material are you trying to seek for this warehouse? It's no manufacturing, right?
Yeah, according to the applicant's testimony, it's just a standard distribution warehouse. To my knowledge, there will be no manufacturing onsite, but there is no tenant identified at this point until we get further along with these land use approvals.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I'm going to open it up to the public now.
Madam Chair, I just have a quick.
Go ahead.
I'm sure I just had, Mr. Prasad, with regards to the other items that Mr. Mueller didn't specifically address in the Hinterstein report of February twenty nine, twenty twenty four, the applicant's going to agree, has agreed to comply with them, correct?
I do believe he will, he will agree and comply with all the other comments unless Mr. Mueller has any other information on those comments.
Any other members of the board have questions of this witness?
Madam Chair, Dawn Corcoran, it's not a question, but it's just in item twenty of the staff report. It indicates there's two spare four inch electrical conduits, that should be fiber optic conduits. I just wanted to make the applicant aware of that.
Yep, understood, I don't see any issue with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions of this witness? Okay, Ms. Buckley, I'm going to open it to the members of the public. Members of the public, you have an opportunity to question this witness. If you have any questions, please indicate by waving your hand.
Can you please unchair your screen, Mr. Mueller?
Yep.
Thank you. There we go, I can see. No one is raising their hand, Madam Chair.
Okay, close to the public. Mr. Piso, do you have another witness?
Yes, we have one more witness. It is our traffic engineer, Mr. Craig Paragoy from Dynamic Traffic, an ex of the board swearman.
Right, sir, if you could state your name, spell your last name for the record, and give us your professional address.
Sure, my name is Craig Paragoy, P E R E G O Y. Business address is two forty five Main Street in Chester, New Jersey. Home address is here in Biscataway.
You raise your right hand, you swear the testimony, give before the board, I'll be the whole truth?
I do.
Your witness?
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Mr. Paragoy, can you please give the board the benefits of your qualification, please?
Sure, I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Virginia Tech, a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey. I've been working as a traffic engineer for twenty four years now. I testified hundreds of times, pretty much on a nightly basis throughout the state as an expert in traffic engineering.
You may proceed as an expert in traffic.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Paragoy, if you can please describe the site circulation, the movements, ingress egress, and if you can address the traffic report by Ms. Betsy Dolan.
Sure, I'll keep it brief, and I got a big, a couple of applications behind us. Really nothing but good things to say about this in terms of traffic impacting and cleaning this up. You saw that the driveway configuration that Mr. Mueller pointed out is greatly improved from what there is today. And part of the goal of that, and this was in consultation with the county, was to make it so trucks can enter and exit the site from the right most lane, rather than what they have to do today and swing out across multiple lanes of traffic to get in or out. So that's what's behind that design, which is a big improvement. As far as actual traffic generation, you heard it's the building staying the same. It's a warehouse today, and it's going to be a warehouse tomorrow. So the way we typically do traffic generation projections is based on the building square footage and the use, which is the same. So really, the trip generation potential or traffic generation potential of the site stays the same. The only difference is sort of formalizing that trailer storage in the back, rather than just having it on dirt. It's, you know, formalized trailer storage. So just to sort of quantify how much traffic that generates, if it were its own standalone. I took a look at some research counts that we did. The IT considers trailer parking as part of the warehouse, and some have it and some don't. But we took a look at sites, three sites in New Jersey that actually are just strictly trailer storage and did some research counts for them. We're trying to actually get New Jersey DOT to adopt these rates. And based on those research counts for trailer storage of this size, it would generate at most during a peak hour, nine trips. A trip is a vehicle either entering or exiting. Typically, you're looking at a significant increase in traffic being a hundred or more trips. That's what New Jersey DOT says is a significant increase, so we're less than ten percent of that. So to the extent that there would be any additional traffic generation beyond what's already could potentially occur, would the building be occupied? It's very insignificant, and I think the improved access and just cleaning up the site far outweighs you know, that minimal increase in traffic generation. And that's really it. Like I said, I drive by the site pretty much every day, I live here in town, so glad to see it getting cleaned up.
Oh, thank you. Members of the board, do you have any questions of this witness? Hearing, no, oh, go ahead, sorry.
I was just going to say, does Ms. Dolan have any comments with regards to the traffic testimony?
Ms. Dolan? Is she?
I'm here, can you hear me now? Yeah, I'm fine with all of the testimony from both the engineer and the traffic engineer. I concur with the findings, and I'm satisfied that they have addressed our comments.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open it to the public, hearing no questions now from the members of the board. Ms. Buckley, members of the public, I'm opening up the questioning of this traffic engineer in this matter. If you have any questions, would you indicate your willingness to ask a question by waving the hand?
No, I'm, Madam Chair.
Thank you, close to the public. Mr. Piso, would you like to sum up or have anything else?
I have no comments for my professionals and their testimony that they provided tonight. I think they did a good job addressing all the staff reports and addressing any concerns of the board professionals and answering the questions of the board, board members, excuse me. I have no further questions for them, and I would ask the board to look favor upon this application.
Members of the board, you've heard the testimonies in this application is your pleasure with reference to a motion.
Madam Chair, Dawn Corcoran, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the application subject to the board professional reports. Also subject to the additional striping, I was brought up at the, where the, there's a discontinuance of sidewalks. And I believe, what is that?
Okay, do I have a second?
Reverend Kenny and Madam Chair, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Mayor Waller.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill.
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran.
Yes.
Reverend Kenny.
Yes.
Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
Ms. Ahmed.
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, members of the board and Madam Chair. I hope you guys have a great night.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you, good night.
Item number fourteen, twenty four PB zero one, Kashi Biosciences LLC for a preliminary and final site plan.
Give me one second, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Pack up and unpack.
I didn't send you that much stuff, Tom.
Mr. Christopher Erd.
That is me. When you're ready, when everybody's all set and ready to go.
Okay.
All good.
You may proceed, Mr. Erd.
Okay, good evening, everyone. As Madam Chair said, my name is Christopher Erd. I'm an attorney at Norris McLaughlin in Bridgewater, New Jersey. And I'm representing the applicant here, Kashi Biosciences LLC. And this is an application for preliminary and final site plan approval for some relatively minor additions to their existing operation, which is currently located on New England Avenue. Twenty New England Avenue, it's block forty six oh one, lot five. It's approximately a lot that's approximately five acres in area. They've been in operation for a while. They're a biopharmaceutical company, as their name would suggest. The gist of the application is in what I would call the rear of the building, so the opposite side from New England Avenue. They want to put on a roughly six thousand foot one-story addition and approximately seventy seven, seven thousand seven hundred square foot two-story addition plus an emergency backup generator in the rear of the building. They also have some minor improvements and changes to the landscaping and parking. And also, as we discussed at the workshop meeting, they're going to install a sidewalk along the frontage of New England Avenue, which is currently not there. There really are no variances here that are new. There's one that's existing, previously approved for freestanding sign on a New England Avenue that was approved previously. The problem with that sign or the variance that was granted was because it's within six feet of the right of way, and the setback is supposed to be fifty feet. So that variance has already been granted previously. So we're not really in the need for applying for it again. But we just draw your attention as your professionals did in your reports. There are a couple of minor waivers that we'll get to with regard to parking and landscaping, mostly having to do with the configuration of the lot and how those things can be best dealt with. Of course, the applicant would work with the professionals to fine tune things. But those are relatively minor, and they're pointed out in the board's reports. And just before we head into testimony, I do have a few reports here, just to make sure that we're all on the same page here. I have a report from the fire department that was dated January thirtieth, twenty twenty four. There's a memo from the There's a memo from the Division of Engineering and Planning dated March twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Um, oh, and by the way, I'm not going through the superseded reports. So some of these coming up, um, are superseding reports. So the next one is May first, two thousand twenty-four from Dolan and Dean. Then after that is from Delaware Raritan Engineering dated May third, twenty twenty-four. And the last one is from C M E dated May sixth, twenty twenty-four. So, um, we are not planning on going through every single item in all the reports. I'm sure nobody here wants to go through them line by line. Generally speaking, there's gonna be, uh, a will comply to every item, um, which. Uh, it's very helpful having workshop meetings. I wish every town would have those. Um, uh, as you know, as you probably know, um, a lot of towns don't. Um, but that helps work through a lot of those issues ahead of time. So there may be a couple of things that we need to just generally discuss, but they're they're almost entirely gonna be. Um, will comply with just some minor discussion on a couple of the items just for clarification purposes. So.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, if I may, I just wanna, I apologize. This is Dawn Corcoran.
Yeah, go ahead.
The staff did issue a revised report, um, dated April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, based on the revised site plan drawings, um.
April twenty-second, you said?
Correct. There's nothing new in the report. If anything, um, several of the items were addressed and removed from that original March twelfth report. So there there is nothing new, um, within this report.
Oh, I, yeah, I do not have that. That's.
Okay.
Strange. So the, when you say the staff, that would be the engineering department?
Uh, myself, the landscape architect and our supervisor of engineering.
Okay, so that was dated, what, April twenty-second?
Twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. And again, it was just based on the revised site plan drawings that were submitted to our office. Um. I think there's. There's seventeen items within the report. Number eighteen is just a requirement from Middlesex County. Um.
Uh, I I apologize. I don't I don't have a copy of that one. I don't know. Sometimes those things happen. Um, when it, when we, uh, i- is. When we get to, I usually do them in chronological order. When we get to that one, is it possible for?
Yeah, I just resent it, Mister Erd.
Well, sorry, then again?
I just resent it.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Thanks, Laura.
You're welcome.
I I think essentially what Dawn is saying is. If you look at the March twelfth, twenty twenty-four reported divisions of engineering, planning and development, where there were twenty-six items. Your new site plans addressed, it sounds like eight of the items, so they took them out. Okay. And left with eighteen that were probably things like the sidewalk and the conduit line and the the items that still. Would be conditions of approval or. Okay. You know, so they didn't add anything. They just, there's eight less things you had to worry about. I got you, and they're all, I I'm looking at it right now, and thank you for sending that to me. Um, it looks like they're all gonna be comply. Um, but since literally this is the first time I'm seeing it. And the other professionals who are on here haven't seen it at all, which is what I'm gonna do next is send it to them. Um, if you don't mind, just give me one second if you bear with me so I can do that. The wonders of technology.
Hmm. Fabulous.
Or the curse. Right, or the curse, exactly. See, if we were there in person, we would just pass it around, right? Just, uh, there's a, there's a bunch of people that have to copy and paste all their email addresses, so I'm sorry, just bear with me. And just for those of you who are on here, uh, that are on my team, the the ray line just says staff. When it comes through. Almost there. Sent. Okay, so now everybody has it. Just let me go to my printer so I can get a copy of it. Thanks. That's one of the reasons why I like to go through at the beginning the litany of reports. Because sometimes that happens. Okay, so are, with that being said, the first witness that I had is gonna be. Unless anyone, unless the board has any other questions or or anything else for me, um, I I'll like to move on.
I believe we're ready for the witnesses.
Sure. Okay, so the the first witness is going to be from Kashiv. Um, to just give a little bit of background on their company and why they are. Proposing what they're proposing. So that person, um, should be Mahul. Uh, Sharma, Mahul.
Yes, yes.
There.
Yeah. Good evening to all member of the board.
Thank you. Good evening.
Can you turn on your camera, sir? Yeah, I don't see your video.
Hold on.
Oh, okay, you're coming up. Right now, it's just still a gray screen.
Yeah, yeah, hold on.
Oh, and also while we're waiting for that, if I recall from the the vote on the last one, there were seven eligible voting members. Yes, there are seven members currently hearing this application, Chris. Thanks a lot. I don't think it'll be an issue, but I just always like to know. Mahul, just let us know when you're ready. We're waiting for your video.
Hello? Chris, can you see me?
Nope. Still, your video's not on. Yep, there you are.
Better? Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so Mahul, if you could, uh, you know, introduce yourself, spell your name. You're gonna have to be sworn in and they can describe, uh, who you are with the company and and then what what we're here for. Sir, if you could state your name, spell your last name and give us your professional address.
Sure. So my name is Mahul Sharma from Kashu Bioscience, twenty New England Avenue, Biscatway, New Jersey. Uh, I did my bachelor's in.
Oh, gotta swear you in first. Hold on. Raise your right hand. Swear the testimony and give before this board will be the whole truth?
Yes, I'll do.
All right, you're a witness, Christopher. Thanks. Okay, so Mahul, you were about to get rolling on, uh, what, uh, what your company does and, uh, why you're here. So, uh, just take it slow so everybody can follow along. No need to rush, all right? So just, but it, you don't have to go into tremendous detail about all your different products, just in general.
Sure, sure. So again, uh, good evening to all member of the boards. My name is Mahul Sharma. Uh, business address is twenty New England Avenue, Castle Bioscience, New Jersey. Uh, professionally, I did my bachelor's in mechanical engineering and I did my, uh, master's in business administrations. Uh, I hold, uh, position of vice president, global engineering and facility for Kashu Bioscience. Uh, Kashu Bioscience is a fully integrated, uh, uh, biopharmaceutical company. Uh, with capabilities in both development and C G M P manufacturing of large and complex small molecules. And provide the next generations of drug delivery technologies and biosimilar vaccines and specialty bioproducts. Uh, to support our future products and the business de- demands. Uh, our existing facility, which is somewhere around, uh, forty-six thousand square feet, we are expanding up to fifty-eight thousand square feet. The existing structure shall have a selective building, uh, demolitions and interior renovations. So this future expansion will include a proposed around seventy-seven hundred square feet of. Two-story G M P additions to the south side of the building as well as around four thousand square feet of warehouse and approximately two thousand square feet of utility areas. So the expansion will cater, uh, our existing current, uh, manufacturing facility is five hundred liter bio-reactor capacity. This new expansion will support us, uh, we up to scale up of two thousand liter bio-reactor capacity. Which will forecast and which will, uh, cater our all future, uh, requirements in terms of product manufacturing.
Okay, thank you for that summary. Um, does anybody have any, any questions about, uh, what Kashiv does or why they're here? Um, who could answer those now? Obviously, he's already been sworn in, so he can come back and and fill in blanks later, but if you have any questions now, uh, please ask.
I'd like to know myself how these bioscientific products are, uh, going to be manufactured. Is it by chemical interaction or or how? This is a manufacturing plant, right?
Yes, correct.
Could you give us some idea as to what that process is?
And just keep in mind that they've already been operating and this is just an addition, so it's.
It is.
Okay, but I I'm, we might should get some idea of exactly what goes on there.
Understood.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so this is a biological facility, so we develop the cell. Uh, in a small-scale, uh, bio-reactor from one liter to five liter to twenty liter to two five hundred liter. And that cell has been harvested. It grows in millions and then with a different purification process. We harvest that cell and extract the protein from the cell. And that final product, uh, will be our drug substance product, which will be eventually transferred to the drug product facility. Which will be our P F S and 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 vial, where we can fill the final drug substance into the into the P F S, uh, uh, pre-filled syringe.
And when it reaches this.
Chemical, there is no chemical reactions. There is no chemical used in this product, no.
Is it in a vial or is it in a can or is it in a plastic when it it's reached the. The end of the process, when you're finished with it, it's in what kind of container or form?
It will be in P F S, pre-filled syringe.
Could you explain that a little more to me, please?
Uh, P F S, pre-filled syringe.
Uh, the pre-filled syringes.
Oh, okay, okay. Pre-filled syringes, okay.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. They'll be packaged in some way then?
Correct.
Okay.
In our Chicago facility.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that won't take place here in Biscataway?
N- no, so Biscatway facility will be drug substance manufacturing facility. And we have our another commercial approved, FDA-approved facility in Chicago where we have full finish capabilities. So the drug substance will be manufactured here in Biscatway and that's, uh, drug substance will be transferred to our, uh, Chicago facility for full finish.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from any other members of the board? Hearing none, um, I'd like to open it up to members of the public. Anyone in the public wishing to ask any questions of this witness, please signify by raising your hand. Ms. Buckley, do you see anyone?
No, and Madam Chair.
Thank you. Close to the public. Okay, Mister Erd, you can call your next.
Okay, um, our next witness would be our, um, civil engineer. Who is, uh, Rudy Satirach. Uh, Rudy, you out there?
Oh, give me one moment. He came in as an attendee. He didn't use the link, so hold on.
Oh. Sorry about that. He was the late ad.
Oh, it's fine.
More, more technology.
That's okay. All he has to do is accept. All right.
Thank you, because I I I didn't see his name on the attendees list. I got a little concerned.
Oh, he's here. He should be.
I'm here, I'm here. I just. You're right, this is too much technology for me.
We got you, it's okay.
Also complicated, yeah.
Well, when the engineers are saying there's too much technology, we have a problem.
I'm, I'm right here, I see myself.
You're here.
Okay, so we're gonna have Rudy testify, but to the extent we have, um, drawings to show. Um, I don't believe we have any new exhibits. There's just documents that have been present, that have already been filed. And that's why Tyler Fox is showing up here, because he's gonna be the one in control of the exhibits that Rudy may may discuss. Um, just to avoid confusion on while they're both on, um, so.
You wanna get him sworn in first and then?
That's exactly what, that was gonna be my next thing, thanks. So it might be a good idea to swear both of them in, just in case there's some explanation that that Tyo needs to give too.
That's fine.
Okay. So, uh, Rudy, if you could state your name and please spell your last name and give us your professional address.
My name is Rudolph, middle initial S. Last name is Shetara, S H A T A R A H.
And your professional address, sir?
Sixty-five hundred Jericho Turnpike, Suite one W, Say asset, New York, one one seven nine one.
Okay. Raise your right hand. You swear the testimony and give before this board will be the whole truth?
I do.
Okay. Thank you. And did you wanna swear Tyler in just in case, and since he's gonna be showing the exhibits? Is, is he gonna be testifying and answering any questions or is he just putting up the picture? He might be, because he was also involved in preparing the plans along with Rudy. And since he's gonna be showing them, it's probably a good idea to swear him in, so we don't have to worry about it later. Okay, uh, Mister Fox, if you could state your name, spell your last name, give us your professional address.
My name is Tyler Fox, last name is Fox, F O X. And my professional address is twenty-four ten North Ocean Avenue in Farmingville, New York, one one seven three eight.
Raise your right hand. Swear the testimony and give before this board will be the whole truth?
I do.
Okay, your witness is, uh, Mister. Um, Rudy, if you could please briefly describe your professional qualifications as a professional engineer, uh, that would be appreciated.
I am, uh. I'm a professional engineer. Uh, I have approximately forty-three years of, uh, experience between. Civil, structural. And, um, mo- mostly civil and structural, both. The, and, um. I've been on my own as a business for. Thirty-two years, I believe. Yeah, thirty-two years been, uh, on my own. Uh, the, uh, the projects that, uh, we have been a- accomplished, uh. We're working on, uh, a new BMW le- dealership. We've done, uh, like ten or ten other dealerships. Uh, we've done, uh, several projects and I'm doing actually a very exciting project right now. Start the Belt, which is a surf park out in Shirley, Long Island.
Okay, well, thank you. And you, uh, were actively involved in preparing the plans and have reviewed them and are prepared to testify tonight about the plans for this application?
Yes, I work very closely with Tyler. You know.
So thank you. So I I'd offer, um, Rudy, it it's just easier to say his first name. I apologize.
No, no, Rudy's good.
As as a professional engineer, uh, expert.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure he has all the educational degrees to go beyond that forty-three years of experience, sir.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, now this kind of be a team effort between Rudy and Tyre. If you could, Rudy, go through, uh, what is planned at the site and sort of give the board the benefit of the layout and. And, uh, dimensions and what exactly is planned at this site? So Tyler's sharing his screen to show the plans that were previously submitted. Um, Mister Barlow, I I don't think these need to be remarked, but that's up to you, um, because they're already been submitted. As long as there's been no changes, alterations, coloring or anything else to them. No, um, if they've been. Then Tyler, can you confirm that? That these are exactly the same as what was submitted?
That's correct. These are the same plans as submitted.
Okay, if then, if someone could just, you know, describe what it is and and the the date they were prepared as they're using, utilizing them. Okay, so Rudy, can you go ahead and, uh, do that? You might need to zoom in a little bit, Tyler. It's a little hard to see.
Yeah, I would just let that to Tyler, let him go ahead and. Yeah, I would just let Tyler, let him go ahead and I'll make any comments along the way.
And Rudy, if you could turn your volume up, that might be helpful. You're pretty.
It's a secret.
Or or closer to the microphone, I'm not sure.
Okay, is that better?
That's better, yes, thank you.
Okay, uh, that's the secret of the trade, you know, forty-three years, you you learn a lot about these things. So I I would like to defer to Tyler to let him describe it and I will chime in as needed.
Well, what are Tyler's qualifications then?
Okay, well, Tyler, can you can you set forth your qualifications then?
Yes, absolutely. So my name is Tyler Fox.
Professional architect.
Yeah, I am a licensed architect and I'm a junior partner at JM Two Architecture. And we are the design consultants hired directly with Rudy Shetara for the design of the site and the construction documents for the building.
Okay, so I'd like to offer Tyler as a professional architect, expert as well to help Rudy with his testimony here. Also, Tyler, you were involved in preparing these plans as well.
That's correct.
Tyler, can I give some of your little educational background, please?
Absolutely. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Architecture from Alfred State College in New York State.
And how long have you been practicing?
Uh, I've been a licensed architect for over two years and and I'm good standing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Tyler, since these plans are actually on your title block, you can help Rudy to describe the date and what each sheet generally shows, and then he can go through the engineering aspects.
Yeah, gladly. So these plans were prepared last dated April first, twenty twenty-four, submitted to the township of Piscataway on April fifth. The set is comprised of eleven sheets of site plans and proposed building plans and elevations for the project. Our first sheet here includes a dimensioned site plan showing the proposed nature of the development we have on this site.
This is this sheet is, just so when you go through the different sheets, if you could say the name of the sheet for the record, this is C one hundred.
She C one hundred, absolutely. As Mr. Sharma had stated, the scope of the work here is a proposed seven thousand seven hundred square foot manufacturing addition to the south of this building and to confirm, when I say south, it's to the right of the page. And also a warehouse addition of about four thousand square feet to the east and a utility and equipment room addition also to the east. The site improvements shown here, just very generally speaking, is is very minor. The the major site improvements here would include repaving and restriping of the parking lot, which is indicated on the sheet. Proposed, a proposed retaining wall and proposed five-foot sidewalk along New England Avenue, as well as some proposed increased lighting, which is included in this plan as well, which was submitted to the township as well. She C one oh one defines the demolition areas of the site, which you can see as well as relatively minor what we're proposing here along the perimeter of the building on the south side. There's currently some sidewalk and curb that will be removed in for construction of the addition to the south. And on the east side, we have demolition of an existing partial curb for an equipment pad, which will house compressed air gases, which are used for their processes, as well as a dashed red line along the east, which is their existing limit of their edge of asphalt, which will be replaced for new Belgium block curbs all along the south, the south and the east end. And then the eastern corner, the northeastern corner, is where we're proposing a backup generator. So there's some small demolition area on the site in that corner. She C two hundred is mostly an existing and proposed grading and drainage site plan. Rudy can can speak a little more to this as well, but considering the nature of the application, most impervious and pervious surfaces are being maintained to what's existing. What is changing, of course, is the actual roof area of the additions that will be replacing, of course, some of the grass areas and sidewalk areas. Existing drainage inlets are all in good working condition. We propose to protect them during construction. Just a note about the retaining wall, I did provide a detail within the right-of-way of New England Avenue. It was suggested based on the existing grading of New England in the front yard that we propose a retaining wall, which is only twenty inches high. And that's a split-face block, you know, kind of like a VersaLock style retaining wall of about twenty inches high.
And the purpose of that retaining wall was to accommodate the sidewalk, because originally the plan didn't call for a sidewalk, you didn't need the retaining wall, but now with the sidewalk, you need the retaining wall, is that correct?
That's exactly right, correct.
Mr. Fox or Mr.?
Yes.
I I really don't think the board needs you to go through all eleven sheets of the plans. I mean, if you just wanna kind of either hit the highlights as to the scope of the work or.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, I I don't think you need to. They can look at the plans and if the board members have any specific questions, you know, I I think if the architect wants to talk about what it's gonna look like in terms of the the renderings of it or something, that might be appropriate. And if and if Rudy's gonna offer actually any engineering testimony, you know, that's fine, but I don't think it serves the board's time this evening to just go through the plans.
That's fine, and he's really already hit all the highlights. Um, I don't think that really needs to go into much more detail unless the the board has specific questions about um, this, as you know, I'm assuming that everyone has reviewed the plans and if they have questions that haven't already been answered, we can do that. Um, but if not, we could go through the reports just to confirm that we're gonna be complying with everything. If that's the board's pleasure, we'll we'll move ahead with with that aspect. And the only other witness that we would have is our traffic engineer, which we do have on the line. Uh, there's not really any traffic issues to discuss, but he's here just to introduce himself and be available for if there's any questions after this testimony is finished.
Well, I mean, for instance, can Rudy agree to comply with any of the, on behalf of the applicant, the D N R Raritan Engineering, May third, twenty twenty-four report?
Yes.
If he can, you can just say yes, we'll comply with everything unless there's a specific item you'd like to address.
Yep, yes, we we will comply with everything.
Okay. And if they're going, is the applicant willing to comply with the items set forth in the Division of Engineering and Planning and Development Report? I realize you have one of March twelfth, there's a subsequent one in April, but again, didn't add anything.
Yep, that's it, will comply with the with those items as well.
Again, I don't mean to short-circuit your application, but I know we have another one after this. And this this doesn't have any variances associated with it.
Exactly.
Um, the only question I have is the, um, you're not proposing any changes or moving of the sign that has already been granted a variance, correct?
That that is correct, but Tyler and Rudy, can you confirm that?
Yes.
You're not enlarging the the non-conformity in any way. It's staying exactly the same.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Madam Chair, I didn't mean to to jump in there, but I just thought we could maybe, uh.
No, I I appreciate.
Well, that's fine, and I can I can just whip through the other reports too.
Sure, perfect.
The fire department report was really, it was already approved, and that was the one from January thirtieth, so that one's taken care of. Um, you already hit on the March twelfth revised April twenty-second one that we're gonna comply with. There's another report from the Supervisor of Engineering with one item on it from April twenty-ninth. We will comply with with that. There's the Traffic Engineer, Don Dean's report from May first. There's really nothing to comply with. It was it was all comments. And the the D N R report from May third, we've already talked about, and will comply. And then there's the last one was the May sixth, twenty twenty-four, that will comply. Um, there's a couple of items that they'll have to work with the township professionals with regard to landscaping primarily because of the berm in the front and just to make sure and that that's a will comply just, you know, with uh, consultation with the board's professionals.
Don, do you have any issue if the applicant works with the board's professional staff to resolve any landscaping issues?
Not at all.
Okay, so if that being said, I don't have any other further questions for either Tyler or Rudy.
Okay, if the board, uh, no, but none of the board members have any questions, we can open it up to the public, please. Board members, you heard the testimony, I mean, members of the public, you heard the testimony of these two witnesses. Does anyone in the public have questions of these witnesses? Would you indicate so by waving your hand?
No one, Madam Chair.
Thank you, close to the public. Okay.
Madam Chair, I may just interject. Ms. Dolan, do you have any concerns or issues with regards to traffic as to this matter?
No, our comments were generally in concurrence with this submission. We're fine.
Thank you.
You so much.
Thank you. So I think that one heads off the need for our our traffic engineer. Unless the board does have its own questions for our traffic engineer, then I will not even introduce him for testimony, if that's the board's pleasure.
Ms. Dolan, is that all right with you?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, members of the board, you've heard this application. Mr. Erg, if you don't have a summary, members of the board, what's your pleasure?
Madam Chair, Don Corcoran, I'll make a motion. We approve the application subject to the board professional reports.
Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, Reverend Kenny, I'll second that, providing he makes a, he's in compliance with all the professional reports.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins? Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for moving along so quickly. I'm sure that the applicant behind us will appreciate as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much to all the members of the board from Kashi Bioscience.
You're welcome. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you, thank you.
Item number fifteen twenty-three PB twenty-three slash twenty-four V is in Victor. Spark Car Wash LLC Preliminary and Final Site Plan. And both variants.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. For professionals, my name is Jeff Chang from Law Firm Fox Rothschild out of Princeton. Uh, the pleasure representing Spark Car Wash this evening. I just want to confirm with Council Barlow that notice was proper and acceptable to the board?
It's acceptable.
Okay, perfect. So I I'll just introduce the the application, identify the variances and some of the most recent reports so that we're all on the same page. I know we want to provide a robust record for obvious reasons. So with that being said, I'll go to my direct. Spark Car Wash is a L S C for Block fifty-four oh one, Lot eight point oh zero. Eight point zero one in the township of Piscataway, property is located at ten thirty-eight Stellon Road, Piscataway, New Jersey. Uh, the property is two point one seven acres in size and located GB, General Business Zone. The property is currently approved with a vacant bank building with three ATM drive-through lanes. Uh, the applicant is seeking preliminary final site plan this evening with both variances uh, to construct a four thousand eight hundred forty-one square foot automated car wash structure with twenty-six parking spaces. Uh, it will comprise of twenty-one vacuum spaces and five employee spaces and related signage. Uh, there's a number of variances that we've compiled based on township reports, both from CME and Don Corcoran Gardella. So the eight, I believe that I counted, were the following. So section twenty-one dash one two oh two, location, maximum number of facade signs. One on front facade is permitted where four fronts of four facade signs are proposed. Section twenty-one dash one two oh two point two, maximum percent of front wall area where ten percent is permitted. Uh, and sixteen point three percent is proposed. Section twenty-one dash one two oh two point three, maximum size of freestanding sign. Thirty-two square feet is permitted where fifty point one zero square feet is proposed. Section twenty-one dash one two oh two point three, minimum distance of freestanding sign from street. Twenty-five feet required where ten feet is proposed. Section twenty-one dash one two oh seven, minimum setback for signs under ten square feet. Ten feet from property line required where directional sign of zero feet from side yard property line is proposed. Section twenty-four dash seven oh four point two point B three, minimum width of parking islands, six feet is required where five point two nine feet is proposed. Section twenty-one dash five oh one, proposed thirty-nine foot and fifty-seven front yard setback from accessory structure. Uh, these are the two vacuums where sixty feet is required. And the last variance, I believe, is section twenty-one dash one two oh seven that point five point one, proposed directional sign is located zero feet from the property line and all signs are ten square feet, must be set back a minimum of ten feet from the property line. So just to clarify, those are the variances that are being requested this evening in addition to obviously site plan. Um, and just to make sure that we're on the same page, the reports that we last received were the D N R report dated March seventh, twenty twenty-four. A report from Joe Herrera dated March fifth, twenty twenty-four. A CME Planner's Report dated May sixth, twenty twenty-four. And then Dawn Corcoran's Planning Memo, March fifth, twenty twenty-four. And then Henry Hindustine's Memo of March eighth, twenty twenty-four. Those are the ones that we'll be commenting on through my professional this year.
Did you also, you you may have said it, I missed it. The Dolan Dean Report from the Traffic Expert dated January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
Uh, that, yes, um, my my traffic, yeah, thank you, Mr. Barlow. Yep, that's also identified. So with that being said, I have no professionals this evening. I'm gonna start with Matt Canali, who's the Real Estate Director for Spark Car Wash. He's gonna walk us through the operations, you know, history of Spark Car Wash, why they want to invest in this town and build this, what we think is very nice, beautiful, and gonna be something that's Piscataway will be proud of. Uh, I'll have Paul Much from Stonefield Engineering, uh, who's the Design Engineer, who's gonna walk through the site plan, the variances, show the existing site, uh, what is being proposed. Um, and then Oliver Young out of GKA, uh, that's the architect, who's gonna show you the design and materials and the signage on the property. Uh, and then Andrew Visio, uh, who's also an engineer, traffic engineer out of Stonefield, who will be discussing the traffic justifications, parking, circulation. And then we'll wrap up with John McDonough, uh, the professional planner, who will go through the C two variances, uh, positive, negative criteria. Uh, with that being said, if I could, I'd like to have my first witness.
Uh, Madam Chair, Mr. Chang, before you do that, I and and Jeff, I'm I'm just doing this by way of an abundance of caution.
Yes, sure.
Just on the record, just so the boards are aware, there was an issue with regards to jurisdiction when this application was originally filed. There was an objector who filed an application, prerogative writ complaint in Superior Court, New Brunswick, challenging whether or not the planning board had jurisdiction or this matter should go to the zoning board. Um, at Judge Buca in New Brunswick, referred the matter back to the zoning board as they have the right to interpret whether or not a zone, a use variance would be triggered. While that application was pending, the objector, Mr. Liston, ultimately chose to withdraw that application and dismissed the pending prerogative writ complaint. And as far as I'm concerned, and I believe Mr. Chang will agree, consenting or agreeing that the planning board had jurisdiction, um, that a use variance was not needed. So that's how, just from a little procedural history, if someone reviews this later on, you know, I don't want it to be said that we did this in a vacuum. I believe the planning board is the appropriate venue for this matter, as I do believe a use variance is not required, thereby giving the planning board jurisdiction over this matter. There had, there was an objector who was represented by Mr. Liston, who I don't see on this. If if he does appear or another attorney on his behalf appears, he will have the right to cross-examine any of Mr. Chang's witnesses and offer any of his own witnesses. As this juncture, I don't see him, but if he does pop in or another attorney on behalf of the objector, just so the boards are. Just so the boards are aware, he will have his opportunity to cross-examine and then present if he so chooses. So with that being said, Mr. Chang, I turn it back over to you and you can call your first witness.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, that's it, and the one thing that Mr. Liston sent to us, the case that he was relying on was the Dash versus Township's Spark Zoning Board Matter. And Diamond Chip Realty LLC, I'm looking at a case in front of me, and that's what he gave up his jurisdictional challenge. And that's why we're here this evening before the planning board. So, with that being said, I'd like to have Matt Canali of Spark Car Wash be sworn in and give his qualifications.
Thanks, Jeff, hi, everyone.
I don't know if you can turn on your video, Matt.
I, I don't appear to have a video option, I don't know if there's a, something that needs to take place on, need to be added with panelists, maybe?
No, because I think we're all panelists.
Okay, well.
Yeah, on your bottom left on your computer, it should say stop video or start video, click on that, it'll give you your video.
I don't have that.
Tap your screen.
I'm sorry? I'm on the computer, yeah. Okay, let's see here, I've I've been on for a while now, I think there may just be some, something wrong with my display. I, perhaps I could try on my phone to see if I can get video that way, one second. Oh, I got to join us.
You'd have to call it back in again.
I'm in business, appreciate that.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your professional address, please.
Absolutely, Matt Canali, N A T T H E W. C A N A L E, and we're located at thirty Maple Street Summit, New Jersey.
Raise your right hand, you swear the test, want to give before this board to be the whole truth?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Chang, you're witness.
Sure, so Matt, I'll give you, you can testify in the narrative, but I want you to introduce the board. You know, what is Spark Car Wash, you know, why are you targeting this site? Why do you believe that this market is perfect for your company to expand? I want you to give you could, give the board some market data, emphasize, you know, you're investing significant amount of dollars to the company here. So we want it to work and flourish. We also want to highlight modern operations, environmentally friendly, you know, in terms of recycling the water. And then just to describe that this site makes sense for us in design, we have no variance actually about the. The intensity of the use, it's actually a lot of the science related, so if you walk the board through the narrative and hit those points, I'd be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, absolutely happy to, thank you, Jeff. First and foremost, thank you all for your time this evening, we're very excited to be presenting here before you all. So as, as already introduced, I'm the Director of Real Estate at Spark. As Director of Real Estate, one of my primary responsibilities is to identify locations that would put us as a business. In a position to thrive over the long term. So, you know, we're making a very significant investment in these redevelopment projects, the car washes are quite expensive. So, we do spend quite a bit of time diving deep into the analysis of a market. Understanding its strengths, how the trade area actually works and functions, ultimately to make a decision to move forward. So, when I was first introduced to the site on Stelton Road. What, you know, was obvious and stood out was just the the strength of the retail corridor. You know, at this location, as you all know, you're surrounded by a multitude of national and local retailers. Fast food grocery stores, including the brand new ShopRite on the other side of the street. Superstores like Walmart and Target, gyms, sit-down restaurants, you name it. And the reason for that, as we understood with our analysis, is that the trade area here really extends. Far beyond the actual township of Piscataway. This is largely due to the accessibility that is provided on two eighty-seven. So, the Piscataway-Stelton Road trade area is very easily accessible via two eighty-seven. And that provides accessibility to a multitude of other markets as far west as Bridgewater, as far east of Matutian. And additionally, Route eighteen provides easy access from the south, which is a very dense residential population to the south. Down as far south as North Brunswick, so all of these things, and it's exactly why you have all the other retailers. And a multitude of those retailers in this market, because it it provides you one location that gives you access to. Various other markets via two eighty-seven. So, for those same reasons, we actually selected Piscataway as one of our. Top target markets to be in, and Stelton Road being the primary core within that market. So, as we approach this market, this site stood out due to the fact that it was. Really flanked by two large retail trade centers, one is anchored by Target. The other, we we found that up at the ShopRite going across the street, and then Walmart's down on the other side, so you're really kind of right in the middle. Of that trade area providing for accessibility to a lot of the different customers that, you know, ultimately come and shop here in Piscataway. So, for all those reasons, it was, it made a lot of sense, this actual location and the size of the property too, the size of the property worked perfectly. For our operation, it actually is almost exactly as we designed our prototype. The the three pay stations and the twenty-one vacuums are what we target. On our prototypes, it allows for efficiency of processing cars and also allows for. A high likelihood of customers that utilize the operations to have the ability to utilize the vacuums and facilities. With less vacuums, we could run into an issue where, you know, they were all occupied at the same time, provided for a less optimal customer experience. So again, the size of this property worked really well. All of these things came together to make us feel very confident. And ultimately, the decision that this would be a location that would put us in a position to be successful. And be really immerse ourselves in the community here over the long term. So, as as far as Spark, as a business in operation, what we're proposing here is a, a modern express. Car wash facility. We are open to the public, but we do focus on a membership-based business model. The public can, anybody can come off stealth and utilize the facilities and pay per wash. Along with that wash comes the free use of vacuums or the use of the vacuums at no additional cost. However, we do promote our membership model. Which enables customers to utilize the facilities as often as they like. On a monthly basis for a very fair price. Based upon the the amount of use that you would potentially get out of it. We combine a state-of-the-art technology within our facilities with a very, we think, a very beautifully designed. Building in overall landscape, including the landscaping. And we have a highly trained staff of three to four employees who have various jobs to do while onsite. Including engage with the customer to make sure they understand how to use the vacuum equipment. To understand how they, to use the pay stations, to make sure they understand what wash they're getting and so forth. Ultimately, to provide a pleasant experience for everybody who visits the facility. And that, all those pieces coming together, it'll enable us to create an experience for these customers, which helps with. The the business model of memberships. So, further, we are eco-friendly, we we have three two thousand gallon reclaim tanks. That are state-of-the-art equipment used to filtrate the water we use in order, so we can reuse it onsite. So it recycles between seventy and eighty percent of the water that we do use. In addition, in addition to that, we use kitchen-grade cleaning agents that are non-hazardous to the environment. So, those, those pieces are important as we kind of expand through these various territories as well. Hours of operation onsite, maybe best to to kind of walk you through if everybody could see this. The planets on the screen here, so.
Let's, Mr. Barlow, we could, we'll mark this as A one, this is a rendering. Prepared by. G K and A Associates. Too small for me to see the the date, I don't know, Paul or Matt or you. There we go, ten-three-twenty-three. A one.
So, easiest to.
Oh, last revised, May seventh, twenty twenty-four. Sorry.
Yeah. So easiest to kind of talk through the 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 operations and the circulation of the site by by way of looking at the the rendering in here. So, as, you know, a customer would enter the site, they would be guided by directional signage into the stacking lanes. The stacking lanes wrap the vacuum park, and so every customer that comes in. Through the site would be guided to the stacking lanes, the vacuum park. Excuse me, the the stacking lanes lead to the pay stations, the pay stations, there will be three different pay stations. One is for members only, the other two will be for pay per wash or the public or off-the-street customers. The off-the-street customer kiosk will be attended by a customer service attendant, will help facilitate. A transaction for the customer and help make sure they understand how to use the kiosk and what wash to select and so forth. It's really there to engage with the customer and also just ensure an efficient transaction. The third will be a membership-only lane, which would be designated by signage. And those lanes are equipped with a license plate reading technology, similar to EZ Pass. To enable the member to process through the kiosk and enter the car wash facility very quickly, very seamlessly and so forth. We we will at probably some point modify, you know, two pay per stations. To go from two pa- paper wash stations to two member stations, depending on, you know, where we are in that buildup process of membership. But usually when we open, it's two pay per wash, one member. After you pay, after you exit the kiosk pay station area. The next step would be to enter the tunnel, the tunnel of the car wash, which is on the far side of the building of the rendering you're looking at. That's where you'll encounter the second customer service associate onsite, they're there to help guide the vehicle onto the conveyor and help load it. Once loaded, the car is put into neutral. Once the car is put into neutral, the conveying system will take control of the car and pull the car through the car wash facility. That will enable it to receive the wash from the various mechanicals and machines that we have throughout the the tunnel. Upon exiting the tunnel, the tunnel itself is a hundred and thirty-five feet long. So at any given time on a busy day, there could be four, maybe even five cars within that tunnel, it's a very efficient processing of cars. Built for, you know, processing cars on a busy day. But as you, as you approach the exit of tunnel, there are state-of-the-art blowers and blowing equipment that are designed to completely dry the car. So there's no manual dryers or manual laborers. Needed at the exit of the tunnel to further dry the car, the the equipment is designed to fully dry the car. Upon exiting that tunnel, you will regain control of your vehicle, and then the customer will have an opportunity to either A, access the vacuum park. And utilize the vacuum equipment, or B, exit the site. The third customer service associate would be monitoring the vacuum park area at all times. They're there to engage with the customer, make sure they know how to use the equipment and make sure the area is clean. It's a car wash after all, so there's a lot of trash in the cars that are emptied out. Each of the vacuum stalls are equipped with their individual trash receptacle. One of the car wash, the car wash employee who does occupy the vacuum park's responsibility is to empty those receptacles out. During the day as needed and put them into the dumpster. The trash pickup is once a week or earlier as needed. And it is done usually right before opening around seven o'clock in the morning. But it can be scheduled, it can be scheduled earlier or later, depending on preference. The deliveries we get to the site, so we only have, we only have deliveries once every two weeks typically. And those deliveries come via Sprinter van, there's no large trucks needed to be moving around onsite. Those come via Sprinter van and they come on off-hours when employees are onsite. So either before we open in the morning when employees have arrived, the wash is not yet open, or after hours. Once the wash is closed and the employees are cleaning up the facility. Hours of operation are eight AM to eight PM. Employees generally arrive onsite about an hour before we open around seven o'clock and they will stay onsite. Approximately an hour after we close, so nine PM. So. I think that addresses most of the operational items that I had on my checklist here. I'm certainly happy to address any questions that there may be in regards to operation, business, or or anything else, or Jeff, if there's anything on your list as well.
No, I think you covered everything I wanted you to introduce the board. Madam Chair, board members, I open Mr. Canali up to you for any questions that, or clarifications you may want.
Any questions from the board of this witness?
I actually have one, Madam Chair. Just out of curiosity, Mr. Canali was saying that, you know, Piscata, marketing conditions for Piscataway, but, you know. Isn't it unusual to have four car washes within two miles of each other? I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, you got one up by Freedom Avenue on Stelton Road, you have another one in Celia Avenue, you have one further down on. You know, Stelton Road, whatever, I just, having born and raised in this community, I find it very perplexing business-wise. And I've seen a lot of applications coming for this board over the last thirty years, where it's this, this is not like a fast, like a restaurant industry here. This is for car washes. So I'm just out of curiosity, how your thought processes in your company on this, and why. Another car wash business would financially make it, in theory?
Yeah, no, it's it's a great question, and in looking at competitions, one of the first things that we do when assessing a market. You know, what we, what we know is that there is a very true distinction between. The modern express car wash that we are proposing here and a full, a full-serve or older express only. You know, the, the market largely, I believe, I believe there's only one other full modern express like ours. And so I think, I think there truly is a distinction between the two. Having studied, you know, this business and seeing other markets throughout New Jersey and the country where currently. This product can coexist with the others as well. There are, there are a lot, there is a lot of data showing that. What is needed in a market for. Per express car wash is about twenty thousand people in a three-mile radius. So, in Piscataway at this location in a three-mile radius, you have a hundred thousand people. So, that tells us, that gives us comfort that there's more than enough demand with the right product. And when I say product, I mean the actual experience that we're providing as a business with the right location. Which we believe strongly this is the right location and the right market, where you're really just exposing yourself to enough people. So, I certainly understand, you know, the perspective that you have, and I feel most probably have a similar perspective. But what we, what we know, having, you know. Been building this product out throughout New Jersey and really studied, studied other markets around the country. Is that the drivers are population density, the retail trade area. And as long as you aren't saturated from a, a express car wash standpoint. That the two can coexist, it is truly two separate customers between the express car wash customer and a full-service car.
Madam Chair, this is Councilwoman Cahill, unless the mayor has any other questions?
No, I don't, Madam Chair.
So, I do have a question here because you're differentiating yourself from some other car washes. But. Would you say that a car wash like, like this or the location would be? Even a more valuable closer to, let's say, the interchange at of two eighty-seven?
Uh, it's hard to say, I think there's like a lot of variables within the the question. But, you know, I think, I think there theoretically is a lot of good real estate within Piscataway. Most of which is currently, you know, occupied with, you know, various existing uses. But yeah, I mean, theoretically, there could be, you know, other, other locations that could also work. I think just lack of availability is a. is a, tends to be a uh, a theme in some of these stronger markets.
Right. And, and um, I, I started to say differentiate yourself because in fact, we have a car wash that is this very same model um, on Sealy, which is right next to two eighty-seven, which is not busy. Um, I don't know if it's a bigger facility in this when, when it was approved. I think the stalls like uh, where the vacuum stalls are, I think they may have more. Um, I'm not sure this, that, sort of in that general vicinity, you have um, a small business that obviously cannot serve the amount of cars that your car wash can, but is and um, I don't know if they now have a membership now, but they, you know, it is vacuums outside, et cetera. Um, they do have people who though, uh, do dry the car um, outside, which I mean, I'm a labor person, so the more people you hire, the better. Um, it's not a selling point for me not having an extra people there to wipe the car down. That set aside, that's just my opinion. I also am inclined to feel as though um, I mean, with the facility right off of two eighty-seven where you have um, next to a Walmart, uh, pretty high traffic there is pretty slow and they close at six o'clock on the weekdays. So I'm not so sure, and they may have started when they initially opened up with, with bigger, you know, with longer hours. You know, we have um, I think a couple of hotels right on the other side of uh, two eighty-seven, people coming in and out. I, I'm just really concerned like, you know, what is uh, the sales volume that you need to have in order to keep this facility open? Knowing that the facility that's in a very high trafficked area is getting very little traffic in there and is the identical model. It's a membership, it's a pay per. Um, I mean, it's the same setup as I look at you, at your plan, quite frankly.
I, I, I'm very familiar with the um, the location you're speaking about. Um, I can't, you know, I can't speak to their operations or how they run business, obviously, but I can speak to um, from a location standpoint, um, that location in my, in our opinion um, you know, is more of a destination. I think it's uh, it's more of a destination because it's, it's tucked off Stelton and yes, you know, that the Walmart does quite well and, and all that, but what's, what we know being experts, you know, in the industry is that uh, more than fifty percent of the customers that we engage with are impulse, not destination. So most of them are impulse and being front and center, easy accessibility to um, the largest amounts of high quality traffic is paramount. So I don't think while yes, it is next to Walmart and it does, it is next to two eighty-seven, it's only a destination um, or very, it's very much a destination location and um, from, from our uh, you know, point of view, that's, that's a, a major factor as to why I think um, you know, uh, it, it, it could be slower than you would expect.
Also, Mr. Canali, I mean, isn't it true that that, that site is probably two to three times the size of yours, your proposed model? Uh, if I, if I recall, the vacuum stalls are well over fifty stalls, if I recall.
That's correct. Yes, that's correct. They have uh, more than fifty vacuum stalls. I believe they have more than one tunnel as well. Um, it's, it's, I believe the facility is built to be a destination because of uh, how they build them, uh, but again, just my opinion is that um, our location puts us in a much better position um, to have a very strong performing store, um, being right on Stelton within um, that corridor, being able to capture impulse customers.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, well, Madam Chair, my, I just, my last comment is that
Okay.
um, it is just very close to that car wash and a similar model. It, I mean, it just, I don't know, I, 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 for one, I just, I don't see how the, how they both. Well, like I said, you're trying to point out that the one site is very big. This one's not as big. I'm trying to point out that the one site is not busy and in a very tra- hi- highly trafficked area. So those are all my comments, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Any other members from the board wish to comment or ask questions?
Uh, Madam Chair, Reverend Kenny, he was talking about the picking up the trash in off-hours when they're not busy working. Where is that trash dumpster going to be at located in the back or where is it going to be located?
It's, it's located, if you, if you look at the uh, the site plan rendering, it's a little bit blocked by the, the tree in the front. Um, but if you can see the uh, the cursor, um, it's, it's, it's right as you make the right-hand turn into the queue lane.
Those white buildings, Reverend Kenny.
There you go.
Yeah, I, I, I'm looking at it. That's unusual being in, in front of a building. Okay, I'm, I'm seeing it.
Reverend, we'll have the engineer testify and, and explain the reason.
Yeah, I understand that, uh, Mr. Chang, but uh, most of the times it's always in a rear building or on the offside of a building to be in the front, you know, of the main drive. I don't know. Okay, I got it.
Uh, one other thing I'll add just uh, before we move off here, just uh, regarding the, the research we did on like the actual trade area itself, so um, there is a platform that we utilize, um, it's called Placer AI. It's a location intelligence platform that enables us to really dive in and understand the true strength of the trade area. And what it, what it tells us is that um, directly on Stelton Road, that trade area alone draws more than twelve million customer visits um, on an annual basis, which is very, very strong. And I think, you know, it's evidenced by, you know, the retail activity you have, you know, in the area as well. So again, just um, the positioning of this site amongst the strong trade area um, keep, puts us in a position to, to know that, you know, we'll ultimately have a very successful business here.
Well, I'd just like to add another footnote, uh, since I do live in the area, that all four of those car washes are in proximity to the Stelton Road area. Uh, two, three of, one is here, it's a singular, small car wash down here by the school street area. Then the proposed one that you're talking about. And then as we go, then the one that we're talking about this near Walmart. And on the other side of uh, the two eighty-seven corridor is another one on the left-hand side and I don't think I've ever seen them crowded. Three have been quite a lot in this area and it's just a note, just a note from a resident that um, I hope your demographics are correct, but I've never seen them crowded.
No, I, I, I very much so appreciate the, the comment um, as well and um, again, I do think that what, what our experience um, tells us for certain is that the product offering matters. It matters a lot. Um, the experience that we provide matters a lot. You know, you can wash your car in your driveway, right? Like you, anybody could wash their car in the driveway. They come to us because of convenience, because of the experience they receive um, on the facility, because we have a beautifully designed building, because we're a convenient location. We have engaging customers, all of these things um, very much so matter. I would agree completely that if we were just recreating an existing product, um, you know, in a not so good location, that I probably wouldn't do well. I think, I think from our view, this is, this is um, quite different.
Um, if there's no other questions from the um, board members, I'd like to open it to the public. Members of the public, if you'd like to ask a question of this witness, uh, under his testimony, would you please um, indicate by raising your hand? Ms. Buckley, do you see anybody?
I, they need to unchair the screen. I can't see Madam Chair.
Okay, would you please, um, thank you.
Anyone in the public have any comments or questions? No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do you have any other witnesses?
Yeah, so my next witness, Paul Much, uh, professional engineer from Stonefield Engineering. Um, if I could have him s- uh, sworn in and qualified. Uh, he's obviously, he's designed a number of car washes. I work on him with them on a number of projects um, throughout the state. He's been, he's testified as an expert engineer in multiple municipalities. I'm not sure, Paul, if you've ever been to Piscataway though?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Well, one, he can, he can give us the benefit of that. Um, sir, if you could state your name, spell your last name and give us your professional address?
Yes, certainly. Paul Much, M as in Mary, U T C H from Stonefield Engineering located at fifteen Spring Street in Princeton, New Jersey. So Paul, if you could.
Raise your right hand.
Certainly.
Swear a testimony before the board will be the whole truth?
I do.
Your witness, Mr. Chang.
Can you provide your qualifications, education, licensing? They confirm everything is still in uh, good order?
Certainly, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey and my license is in good standing. I graduated from Roan University with a bachelor's degree in civil engineering. I have eleven years of experience on applications similar to the one you're hearing this evening. And I've been accepted by more than a hundred land use boards in the state of New Jersey as an expert witness.
So ask Madam Chair, we accept him as a
Yes, um, he's accepted.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Much, can you walk us, uh, first mark the exhibit, your plans, uh, your civil design drawings, um?
Yeah, we're gonna start, we can start with, with the aerial exhibit.
Exactly. And then walk us, you know, so, so I'll just let you go, but um, in the narrative, you know, mark your exhibits, uh, discuss the existing conditions, uh, proposed layout, uh, walk the board through how all of this is supposed to function um, and discuss any uh, variances, uh, the variances that we're asked about this evening.
Yeah, certainly, we'll get into that. Um, this is the redevelopment of what is a defunct bank site with the associated improvements you'd expect. Parking areas, drive-through lanes as well as lighting. I think it's important to note and it's highlighted by this aerial that half of the site is currently undeveloped and that will continue in the proposed condition. And that's really a condition that will go unchanged for the future of this property if there are any development here because there are wetlands that are located to the west, basically all of the wooded portion, there's a little bit in the back that is not encumbered and then Doty's Brook is located um, along the south side of the plan, the bottom of your page. And the riparian zones and associated buffers there would prevent any expansion of the existing footprint that you're seeing on the screen um, and seeing associated with that bank use. So that is what our development will be and you'll see in the proposed condition. We're essentially reusing the existing footprint and obviously making some significant upgrades that you saw on that three D rendering and you'll certainly see as we move through the application. Um, we have frontage on Stelton Road, which is a county road, five twenty-nine. Uh, we also have frontages and they're not labeled on this plan, but they will be in the site plan rendering um, on two paper streets, which is Walker Lane, which is on the west side of the street and then Howard Grand Boulevard, um, which is located on the southern side of the street. Uh, I think I might add that backwards, but there are two paper streets that encumber on the, the two, the westernmost and the southern side of, of this property. Um, those again, likely could never be developed because of the presence of wetlands and Doty's Brook runs through where that paper street is to the south. So really what you're looking at is what you get from the site from a development yield and we're going to be working within that. Um, as we, as we sort of discussed a little bit, the uses in this area are consistent along the corridor, commercial uses in the GP zone, so this fits in well with the character of that neighborhood um, as well. And with that, I'll get into my next, next exhibit and the
Well, this is A two, right, Mr. Much?
Uh, yeah, I labeled the aerial exhibit, which is prepared by my office and dated um, May eighth, twenty twenty-four, labeled that A two.
Perfect, thank you.
We will make, we'll move to A three, which is a site plan rendering exhibit prepared by my office, prepared on May third, twenty twenty-four. And this is simply a colorized version of the submitted site plan. It's included as your package. We've taken the liberty of adding color, landscaping and other features, just to highlight for the board and the two D sense at the very least um, what the intention of the application is, um, and you'll see some more three D renderings as we move through our architect this evening. So the subject tonight is this state-of-the-art car wash. It is four thousand eight hundred and forty-one square feet. It comes with twenty-one vacuum spaces and six employee spaces. One of those employee spaces will be labeled an EV space, um, and the parking proposed is compliant per code. What comes along with these state-of-the-art car wash uses as we get through the use and operations is the state-of-the-art reclamation system. So these are, this is a car wash that reclaims water, a substantial amount of water to limit the burden on the public utilities. Um, but also serve it to its own building. We've actually started to introduce some roof leaders into the system because the, you know, the reuse is a very important piece of um, not only washing cars, there's about ten gallons of new water that goes into each wash, but it's also used for the various internal components of the of the car wash. It's treated, it's disinfected with UV lights. There's reverse osmosis filtering as well. That water is used throughout the building um, and, and certainly reduces the load substantially on the public utility system as far as water and sanitary usage for this site. Um, access is proposed for this site along Stelton Road in similar location to what is existing. It is a right-in, right-out driveway as it is a median divided roadway on the county roadway. We have an active county application currently for this site. Um, we've addressed all of their comments. The remaining conditions is post-bonds and, and full of a road opening permit. So we have, um, we have essentially a full approval from the county at this point, which is which is very positive for the application. You've heard some of the circulation, but I'll just cover it again for this. Customers enter the site and are encouraged to go um, into the pay station. There's always the option to enter the vacuum stations as well for those, for those member u- users, but generally the operations is you enter the queue area, which is located on the northern side of the site. That queue capacity from, from the building all the way back um, is more than thirty vehicles, which you'll hear from our traffic consultant this evening, but thirty vehicles is, is far more than you would expect for this kind of very, very efficient use um, in this fully automated um, car wash use. As you've heard, there is that trash enclosure located at the front of the site. It's pulled out of the accessory setback, but we located it front to the site um, to allow for easy operations. That trash truck can pull in, back up and then leave the site very simply. If there's a strong preference of the board to move it further into the site, we're happy to explore that and kind of shift around those um, six employee spaces that are located to the west. Um, those employee spaces are low turnover, you know, one shift per day, so the interaction of the employees and the drive-through lanes certainly won't be anything significant here. Um, and we, this is a, this is a standard type situation for this type of use and as our car wash, as far as their prototype goes. Um, as you move through that queue, um, you enter into the pay station area. These are fully automated and high-tech pay stations that are meant to efficiently process vehicles and get them through the tunnel. As you've heard, there is a members-only lane, license plate reading technology um, that allows for members that will be in upwards of sixty to seventy percent of the customer base to move quickly and efficiently through without having to actually um, perform a transaction. So that allows this car wash to really process vehicles. And then the interior two lanes at the, at the onset, um, are pay per wash. Um, there'll be an employee stationed in this area to assist with those transactions. I can say from experience, the smart car wash kiosks are extremely easy to use, large buttons, not a lot of options or confusion there, so pretty simple operations that the pay stations allow for very quick transactions. But there's always, you know, there's always questions and things that that pay station attendant is there to make sure that the safe and efficient operation of that pay station area generally um, continues throughout. Um, there's also, in addition to that thirty-one, thirty-plus car queue that we're providing for this pay station um, to, there's, there's other levels of redundancy that we've incorporated here and specifically that is what we'll call a bailout lane or an escape valve that's located just as you come out of the pay stations, that gore-stripped area to see that leads to the vacuum area. That's allows for, if there is a situation where the tunnel or, or something occurs at the pay station where the person does not want to get a car wash for whatever reason, an emergency situation where we need to move people out because the tunnel is down. Those very rare scenarios, um, we're able to get vehicles out without having to back them through the pay station. That escape valve is just an added level of redundancy um, to ensure that this site operates efficiently, even in those rare emergency moments. Um, you know, just to make sure that we, we have all of our faces covered here. Um, as you move through the pay station, you, you enter into the tunnel, that is a hundred and thirty-five foot tunnel. You can fit about five cars in there, so again, very efficient processing. You can speed up that conveyor belt if it's a busy day and you need to process cars, but really the transaction time moving from pay station through the tunnel is less than two minutes. Um, so overall, this automated state-of-the-art car wash is extremely efficient. It's meant to provide convenience and an experience for the customers and specifically the members. And that's where you kind of come out of the tunnel and that's where some of those features come into play. You hear a little bit more from our architect and some of the building mounted features, but as you exit the car wash, really the experience we're trying to provide here is the aesthetics, which you can see in, in our architecture as well as the landscaping, but also just the usability of the vacuum park. Each one of those vacuum arms has multiple nozzles. There's spray bottles provided onsite, so you can clean your mat. There's automatic mat cleaners and, and other features here. There's automatic mat cleaners and and other features here that allow um for the members to get that experience that we're talking about and 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 make them come back and be returned customers here. We're also provide radiant heating at the building-mounted um situation for washing your mats, as well as to egress a tunnel to ensure that even during the winter months, if we're open the same hours, the same amount of time, there's not, there's not that condition where maybe a couple of drips of water freeze things off. You know, we're, we're, we're making an investment in this site, and we're looking to make sure it operates efficiently and safely um in all conditions. So, you know, the experience is what we're looking for for our customers, and we're trying to convert everybody to a member, so the return customers, the experience, the friendly employees. It's all part of the Spark Car Wash model, which you've heard from Matt this evening. It 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 sets Spark apart in the industry, and that's why I think it'll be successful at this site.
Mr. Mr. March, if I could just, I don't, I hate to interrupt anyone when they're on a roll, but uh Mr. Chang, I just want to let you know the board doesn't hear any witnesses after ten thirty.
Okay.
You're attempting to try and get everything in this evening. Um I would probably hit the highlights and any questions the board has, and also, you know, obviously address the professional reports.
Sure.
If you, if you, um, you know, if you.
Mister Barlow, I wanna, Mister Barlow, I wanna.
Only one at a time.
We're, we're not voting on this application tonight.
Okay.
Cause uh I let the counselor finish his application as best he can, but we're not voting on this tonight, okay?
Understood.
All right.
So we're, and we're making a methodical record as well for obvious reasons, so I.
And I perfectly understand that, Mr. Chang. I just, like I said, I, I didn't want to blindside you at ten twenty-six.
No, I understood. I appreciate it. Thank you. Paul, keep, continue.
Absolutely. So uh moving into the zoning for the site, we are generally a bulk compliance site. The only real variance is from a dimensional standpoint that we're asking for this evening, and you'll hear from our planner, and you'll hear as we move through the application on the variances. Um are, there are two vacuum arms, one located here and one located here at the entrances that are located within the sixty-foot um accessory structure setback. We have had some discussions with professionals and 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 we've identified those variances part of this. Those vacuum arms you'll see in the renderings as we move through our architect, but we are requesting relief for the locations of those, and they just happen to be inside that. Certainly outside the the principal setback of twenty-five feet and within the site, but within that accessory structure setback. So just something I wanted to highlight as we move through the application. We are reducing the impervious coverage in a modest way, but certainly as you can see in the colorized rendering, we're upgrading the landscape and trying to bring kind of a more open and green look to the site as compared to the existing. And then obviously the rear portion of the site, that really it's, it's a, it's a full acre of wooded area that will be, remain undisturbed um due to the wetland impacts of this site. We do have both a wetland L O I um that that confirms the extent of the wetlands, and also we have confirmed that our development does not extend into the wetlands or transition areas. So no wetland permit is required as part of this application. There's also riparian buffers as well as flood hazard areas associated with Doty's Brook. Those have been confirmed, the extent of those have been confirmed via verification with the D E P. And we're currently submitted to the D E P for an individual permit um for the flood hazard area that does clip the building in a, in a, in a slight way. Everything designed here is is in performance with D E P regulations, and that permit will be provided as we move through the application. But again, no expansion of the existing pavement, no exam, expansion of the um the existing development footprint, just fitting within the D E P regulations, and certainly those new flood regulations that increase the flood elevations and fluvial flood zones throughout New Jersey. So looking to comply there, this layout will comply, um and we'll provide those permits as we move through. Um one other item I'd like to identify as far as variances, as far as site plan, is that we do have a proposed freestanding sign. In the original application, it was a more of a pylon sign. We've moved to a monument sign, which is reduced in area of fifty point one square feet, or thirty-two square feet is is proposed. And you can, and our architect will show that on the renderings, and you saw a little bit of it on exhibit A one this evening. Um we are asking for a variance for the setback from the property line. We're proposing ten feet, or twenty-five feet is required. But it's important to note the uniqueness of this site. There is kind of this triangular jog in the property line where um, you know, we are roughly thirty-five, thirty-six feet from the, from the physical street line, but we're only ten feet from the property line. This sign is actually set back two feet further than the existing bank sign. It will be a little bit larger as it extends further into the site. But we have a couple of extra feet of setback here, and if you look up and down the corridor, we're generally consistent with the setback from the curb line. I'm not sure what the other sites and how their property line sets up, but that thirty to forty-foot range of setbacks of signs um is kind of um borne out in this corridor, and I don't want to step on my planner's toes, and so go through that. But it's consistent, and it's, it'll be one of the smaller signs in this corridor as well. There's a lot of multi-tenant pylon signs to the north and south of the site. So I'll let our planner get it more into that, but I wanted to highlight the location and the specific specificity of that sign. Even if you look at a twenty-five foot setback off that profit line, there's not a lot of room to locate that sign in an area that would identify the customers where the driveway is, but also comply with that twenty-five foot setback. But we're happy to discuss that positioning with the board as we move through the application. Um landscaping, investment, and plantings here is a core value of the Spark model. They look to accentuate their architecture with the landscaping. So as you can see here, we're providing a robust landscaping plan. And what this plan does is it kind of brings the, some of the landscaping to the front of the site where the bank building is front. Um currently, we're trying to open that up, provide a more open and airy and green field to the site in the proposed condition, um bringing in all season interest with multiple perennials and grasses and shrubs. Provided, we have thirty-one trees, more than two hundred shrubs, and more than three hundred um perennials and grasses provided for this site, in addition to the green areas that you see as far as grass areas located along the frontage and 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 the um exterior of the site. Stormwater management is relatively simple for this site. We are modestly reducing the impervious coverage, which allows us to naturally comply with the various D E P and local stormwater regulations. But we, we will be installing all-new conveyance system, but discharging at the same point, there's a, there's a manhole and a head wall that heads off into Doty's Brook that this site will um will also discharge to. So the D E P is getting a look at that stormwater. You are professionals, we intend to comply with their comments, but naturally meeting the the regulations by increasing um impervious coverage and landscaping plantings overall. Lighting for the site is provided via state-of-the-art LED lights. Those lights are all backshielded as far as the area lights and focused around the vacuum park, as well as the key features, the entrance, the circulation, the pay stations, and the tunnel. There's near zero um light spill at all sides of this site, um and that does not take into account any of the buffering plantings. Um so we really focus it on this site and and limited light spill off the site. There were some comments in your professionals review letters about dimming lights overnight and turning off the vacuum, um the vacuum arms. Um those are acceptable conditions as part of this application, and I should just mention, each one of those vacuum arms has an LED strip on it that really is meant to illuminate inside your car door after hours in those kind of winter months when uh when it gets darker a little bit early, and then we'll dim the lights overnight. We're happy to comply um with with those conditions that were outlined. Finally, utilities for this site are all relatively simple as well. There's public utilities provided along Stelton Road. We're gonna look to reuse the water and gas connections as we can for the bank. We have to confirm the viability and the sizing of that. But there's existing valves and existing lines that we'll try to reuse. We'll establish a new sanitary connection to the main along Stelton Road. We did receive comments from the sewer department. We intend to comply with all of those. A new underground electrical service will be provided to the bank, or provided to the car wash um from the, from Stelton Road as well. So all all relatively simple utility makeup here. Um and with that, I'll turn it over. Jeff, if you have anything else you'd like me to cover, but that, I think that covers the highlights of the site.
Yeah, I think you covered the highlights, and I just want to be, you know, for the sake of the the record. Uh your, your testimony is based on the, obviously, exhibits that you've just shown, but also the plans that were entitled preliminary final major site plan for Spark Car Wash, proposed car wash uh block fifty-four, four oh one lot eight point zero one, ten thirty-eight, Stellton Road, township of Piscataway, Moesas County, Jersey, consisting of eighteen sheets uh prepared by Stonefield Engineering, dated August eleventh, twenty twenty-three, revised through December one, twenty twenty-three, and then last revised March one, twenty twenty-four. Does that sound accurate?
Yes, that's correct.
Good. Uh with that being said, Madam Chair, uh board members, I I open Mr. Much up to you for any questions or clarifications you may require.
Members of the board, do you have any questions of this witness?
Uh Madam Chair, uh this is Mayor Waller. Uh real quickly, uh during Hurricane Ida, um that area was substantially impacted. Um matter of fact, so much that we actually, somebody uh unfortunately was deceased right there uh because of the raging uh waters uh of the Doty Brook and the impact that came on uh the property. Questioned it right there. Um what, what is the D E P's comment on that? Did they mention anything that there was a fatal right there? And uh, matter of fact, there was two people that were sucked under right, right, right there on that site. One was deceased, and one person miraculously lived uh right on that site because it became a raging river right there over your, the property in question right now.
Yeah, and certainly, and the, and the D E P did not mention the fatality there, but the newly introduced flood hazard rules associated with all fluvial waterways, which Doty's Brook is, increased the flood elevation that we have to design to by two feet. Um so basically, it it took the da, the D E P took the data that they got from the Ida storm and revamped their entire interior flood hazard areas in New Jersey. So the proposed development that we have is elevated above that two-foot increase in the flood hazard area, and that'll all be reflected in the D E P permits. But we are confidently outside of that flood hazard area and the proposed condition as far as our improvements and and in complete conformance with D E P regulations as far as flood storage. So understood that that during an emergency storm like that, Doty's Brook is is going to be um sub- a substantial flow of water, but we've designed our site in accordance with all D E P regulations, and we'll have a permit reflecting the same for that two-foot increase that was basically a direct response to the conditions that they observed in in Ida.
No other questions, uh Madam Chair?
Thank you. Any other members before I open it to the public? Okay, we'll open it to the public now. Anyone in the public wishing?
Can you uh remove screen share, uh Paul?
Yes, could you take that?
The exhibit. Yeah, I was, I was forgetting, you can't stick. There you go.
Thank you.
Just makes my life easier. Thank you.
Yeah, that's all I'm trying to do, Laura. That's it.
Appreciate it. Uh anyone in two hundred feet have anybody, anybody in the public have any questions or comments? No, Madam Chair?
Thank you. Close to the public. Well, I, if you have any more witnesses, I guess we will save them for the next time, or you have, you think you can get them through tonight?
We lost Jeff for a second there. I don't know who he's calling as his next witness. Think he got disconnected, Madam Chair.
Let's give him a moment. Oh, he's coming back on now, I see.
Um we said, we said the stop was at ten thirty, correct?
Correct. You have another witness?
He's coming on now, Mr. Chang.
Yeah, we do have a couple others. I'm just um.
Okay.
Just wondering if it makes sense to.
There he is.
Apologies, I I got booted off my iPad for some reason. I'm, I'm sorry.
That happens.
So I was like, uh, that was a little weird. Um so we, I I'm sorry, where do we leave off? Um I I know Paul's taking off screenshot to make sure the public was heard. Was there any public comment?
Nope. You were asked who your next witness was.
Sure. Yeah, you know, knowing there's a cutoff at ten thirty, I would ask if we could do the architect. I I think we can accomplish that in thirty minutes, if that's okay with the board?
Certainly, go ahead.
With that said, so Oliver Young at G K A Architecture uh is my next witness. Uh if I can have him sworn in and um qualified as a professional architect in the state of New Jersey?
Certainly. Uh Mr. Young, if you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your professional address for the record.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Oliver Young, last name spelled Y O U N G. I'm a principal at G K and A Architects. Our business address is thirty-six Ames Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey.
Okay, if you raise your right hand, swear a testimony before the board will be the whole truth?
Yes, I do.
You're witness, Mr. Chang.
Sure. Uh Oliver, could you give your uh professional qualifications, ed- education uh and confirm your licenses are all in good standing?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I hold a bachelor's degree in architecture from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute located in Troy, New York. I have practiced in the field of architecture for over twenty-five years. I have been a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey for over eighteen years, and my license is current. And my qualifications have been accepted at over sixty planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey, including the zoning board in Piscataway, not the planning board.
I would ask uh Madam Chair if we could accept uh Mr. Young as a professional.
Accepted as a.
Perfect.
Yes.
Thank you. Um so Oliver, if you could walk us through, first, I'd like to just confirm the architecture plans that you submit and you're relying on are entitled proposed car, Spark Car Wash Block Fifty-four oh one, Lot Eight Point Zero One, Ten Thirty, Stellton Road Township of Piscataway, consisting of four sheets prepared by G K and A Architects P C, dated September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, revised through March one, twenty twenty-four. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, Jeff.
Okay, all right. And if you could walk, I know you have some exhibits this evening to share as well. If you could just walk uh in the board through in the narrative, um the design, building, um materials, colors, finish, elevation, uh compliance, um floor plan and signage.
Gladly, we'll do. I'm gonna share my screen right now. And these drawings here are electronic copy of the drawings Jeff just referenced, so I'm not sure if I need to mark those as an exhibit per se. There we go. This is the first sheet, A one of four. It's the standard Spark building layout. Floor area footprints, four thousand eight hundred and forty-one.
I just have your screen. Hmm, not a picture.
Uh let me try again.
Yep, there, you had it earlier, and then you went to your file of just the name of the file for some reason.
Now it should be working.
Yep.
All right.
Just for completeness sake, why don't we just call it A four and we'll just keep going?
Yep.
Sure. Uh this is the floor plan. It is four thousand eight hundred and forty-one square feet in footprint. Overall dimensions of thirty-six by one thirty-nine. It's not a true rectangle. It's actually two shifted rectangles. The tunnel, which you see here in Plan South, which is actually the south side of the site, takes up the entire length of that building. It's twenty-one feet wide. And the northernmost section of that is all the ancillary or support for that. Um that's the office, the employee bathroom, oh, employee bathroom, break room, storage room, equipment room, and electrical room going from west to east. And for reference purposes, on the right-hand side of the sheet, that's the tunnel exit, that faces east, which is Stelton Road, and that's what we consider the front of the building, and the building sits perpendicular to Stelton Road. And now, Jeff, I'm actually going to introduce the, the new exhibit now. I think it's the appropriate time. We're going to introduce a new architectural plan for Spark, uh changes that have occurred since we originally designed this site. In, in summary, what we're doing is we're mirroring the entire building. And the tunnel, instead of facing the outside or the south of the site, the tunnel is now going to face the interior of the site, the vacuum spaces. And the main reason being is there's a decent amount of glass in the tunnel right here, and we want that glass, we want that to face the vacuum spaces. So I'm going to share this new exhibit here. I'll have to mark this, I believe, as A five. Yes, sir. This is prepared by G K and A under my direction. It's floor plan and elevation updates dated May seventh, twenty twenty-four. And all we've done is flip the building. So now the tunnel is on the north side of the property as opposed to the south side. No other changes to the building. In terms of the, the offsets that I mentioned, it's approximately a four-foot offset on the east and west sides between the tunnel and the ancillary supports. Dimensions, overall footprint, no changes whatsoever, and I want to keep, keep emphasizing that as I introduce the exhibits. I'm going to switch now to the elevations, and I'm going to pull up the original rendering package we prepared based on the original design. First, this is actually five sheets. First, this is actually five sheets. I believe I can mark them all as A six.
Correct.
I'm not going to show all the sheets. I'm going to go to some of the the rendering views, and this is what Matt started off, Mr. Canali started off with his testimony. This is R two. This is an existing view of the site. And then we have on the next page, the proposed view of the site. This is the original design that was submitted to the board, so it looks slightly different than exhibit R one, which is actually the new design. I just want to walk the board, show the board the original and the new, so you can see that we're literally flipping the building in place. In terms of the massing of the building, the parapet heights vary between eighteen and eighteen foot eight inches. They step up on the short sides of the building on east and west that eight inch transition. There's also a taller section at the rear of the building. I'm highlighting it with my cursor right here. That steps up to twenty two feet, two inches. Then at the front of the building, we have what was originally designed as a wedge element. It's an eye catcher, which also presented an opportunity for signage. That wedge element was angled and pitched. It topped off at twenty five foot, six inches to the highest point, which is on the south side and sloped down, if you follow my cursor, to a low point of twenty feet, one inches. Now I'm going to pull up the same rendering, which is what we referenced during Mr. Canali's testimony, so you can see the differences. And then I'm going to walk the board through the materials at that time. Bear with me a second while this opens. Now, this is R one, sorry, exhibit A one, which was introduced at the start of the hearing. So you can see if I, I don't want to confuse the board and flip back and forth. The building sits in the same spot. We've simply pulled the tunnel to this side to face the vacuum spaces, and you can see the glazing along the tunnel. The heights of the building have not changed. The twenty two foot, two inch bump out is now at the south side facing the other property. We have redesigned this wedge element. We've removed the slope of it. It's now a standard height of twenty four, sorry, twenty three feet, four inches. So it's actually two feet lower than originally designed. And what with this new design, flipping the tunnel to the side, it presented us an opportunity for a more uniform signage package here. In regards to colors and materials, no changes to the colors, no changes to the materials with this architectural revision I'm referring to. It's a sleek, modern design, no matter what way you look at it. The finishes are contemporary and we have a tasteful yet eye catching use of color. There's three prevalent materials on the building. We have metal panels in both a blue and white finishes. This looks a little gray. It's just the shadow from the rendering. We also have gray corrugated metal siding and a white exterior porcelain tile. You'll also see an orange accent band prevalent along the tunnel side. That accent band is also present on the south side of the building. And that band turns into a projecting canopy of three feet over the tunnel entrance, which you can't see here. It's at the rear of the site. But we have the same flat, three foot, orange canopy at the tunnel exit. Over the tunnel itself, that orange canopy projects out one foot, one foot. In regards to glazing, the majority of glazing is along the tunnel elevation. We also have a small amount of glazing at the office area, which is at the back of the property. You can't see it here, plus one small window at the break room for the employees to have some natural light. In regards to building signage, we originally proposed four signs for the building. I'm going to pivot back to exhibit A six, which was our original rendering package. And I'll pull up the first sheet of that, which was the colorized building elevations. You could see the four signs here in the original design. We had one on the east elevation facing Stelton Road. We had another sign, and it was a Spark logo with the word Spark Car Wash below it. Then on the north elevation, which faces the vacuum spaces, we have again a Spark logo with the words Spark Car Wash. We also have a smaller sign at an area called the Spark Park, which I actually wanted to touch upon. That's a matte cleaning area where customers can take the car mats out of their cars, walk up to this and get their mats washed. That area is called the Spark Park. It has additional cleaning materials and supplies. But that's a, an identification sign, and that's eight point eight square feet. And then we had one additional sign on the south elevation, which was the Spark logo. So our original signage package had four different signs totaling one hundred and forty four point nine square feet. With our updated building design, and again, I apologize for pivoting back and forth between exhibits, I'm pulling up the first page of the revised architectural. This is dating, this is exhibit A one. This is the first page of it. It's updated, colorized, building elevations, again dated May seventh. We're down to three building signs. On the east elevation, same exact sign as we originally proposed. On the north elevation, we have the same type of sign, but it's actually larger. It matches the, it matches the sign in the east elevation in size. The original design, those two signs on the east and north, didn't match. The north elevation was slightly smaller. However, with this newly designed element, we felt it was important to have the signage match. We still have the same Spark Park signage, the same size. However, we've eliminated the fourth sign, which was that Spark logo on the south elevation. So we've gone from four signs to three signs. However, the signage square footage has increased. And that's due to this Spark Car Wash sign in the north elevation now being the same size as the Spark Car Wash sign on the east elevation. So we're proposing three total signs at a total square footage of one hundred and sixty point eight square feet. The Spark Park sign is only eight point eight square feet, and the two other Spark and Spark logo signs are seventy six square feet each. I want to make one important distinction about the size of those two Spark signs. When we do our calculations, we're drawing a rectangle around the outermost extents of those signs. So that includes the logo and the word Spark Car Wash, and we're essentially drawing a rectangle. I'm not going to try to draw it here. I'll screw up the program. We're drawing a rectangle as big as possible per ordinance. What that means is there's a lot of dead space to the right and to the left of this logo that we have to count in our square footage calculations. When we take the area of that dead space, it's actually twenty four square feet per sign of not logo and not lettering. There's twelve square feet here and twelve square feet here on the right hand side of that. You do that times two, that's forty eight square feet of dead signage area, in our opinion, which factor in to the total proposed facade signage of one hundred and sixty point eight. If you do some simple math and subtract that forty eight square feet of dead space, that actually gives us one hundred and twelve point eight square feet of signage. And that is important to address because we are allowed a total maximum area of eighty eight point nine square feet of building mounted signage. And I'll leave it at that. In regards to the signage, I believe our planner at a future hearing will delve further in to the need for relief for signage. Jeff, I've covered everything I wanted to address in my direct. Is there anything else you wanted me to hit upon?
No, I I think that you you touched upon everything. Madam Chair, Board Members, I open Mr. Young up to you for questions and clarifications.
Members of the board, do you have any questions individually for this witness? Hearing no answer. I'd like to open it up to the public for any questions that they may have. Okay, you've taken it down. Members of the public, do you have any questions of the witness that you've heard tonight, of this witness, the architect?
Noah, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Close to the public. I believe then this will conclude your testimony for this evening.
Yeah, e- exactly, Madam Chair. If we could be carried to the next hearing date, I think it was June twelfth.
June twelfth, yes.
So that we could.
We have space on our our June twelfth agenda, Mr. Barlow.
Yes.
Yeah, and and any members of the public that are here, there won't be any further notice. The notice you already were served with, and we're announcing it here that the meeting will be, it'll be carried to the June twelfth Planning Board meeting at seven thirty.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can I just make, for the public, the Zoom information will be different. It will be on our website a few days prior to the hearing for you to sign on the meeting.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
A weekend, everybody.
Yep, Mother's Day. Bye bye.
Have a good night, Jeff.
Thank you. Take care, Mr. Barlow.
Just need a motion to adjourn.
We need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, good thing I didn't sign off. Can I get a motion from, to adjourn from the board, please?
Madam Chair, Reverend Kenny, I'd make a motion to adjourn meeting.
Hey, or second?
Second, Councilwoman Cahill.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone.
Happy Mother's Day.
Thank you.
Happy Mother's Day.